Ladies and gentlemen, I re-adjourn the meeting of the regular, the regular meeting of the Menifee City Council, timed seven o'clock. Madam Attorney, do we have a report out of closed session?
Yes, we do. The council met in closed session with regard to the claim that's listed on the agenda, and action was taken on a motion by Councilmember August, seconded by Mayor Mann, and a 5-0 vote to reject the claim.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, would you call the roll?
Yes, Your Honor. Councilmember August, Councilmember Furman, Councilmember Denver, Deputy Mayor Edgerton, and Mayor Mann.
Here.
Thank you.
And for our indication tonight, we have Pastor Casey Crawford, Elevation Church. Casey?
Please join me in a word of prayer. God, we want to pause tonight and start beginning by recognizing a couple things. That's why we pray, Lord, we want to recognize first and foremost thanking You for the many gifts of life that You have given us, the many good gifts. We thank You for this city of Menifee, as it truly is a wonderful place to live and to raise a family. We know we have challenges, like every city, but we want to thank You, God, that this is a wonderful place to be. We thank You for the city council members, who each one invests a considerable amount of time and effort and energy, and we thank You, God. We pray You would bless their families. And, God, we pray that You continue to direct this, this city and the city council. Secondly, we want to recognize our dependence on You. In the wise words of Jesus, "Apart from You, God, we can do nothing; but as we remain in You, we can bear good fruit." So we want to recognize our dependence on You, God, for help. And we ask, at the beginning of this council meeting, that Your wisdom would be present here, as You did tell us in Your Word, to call upon You for wisdom when we need it. So we recognize our need for You, God, and we ask for Your wisdom to be present tonight and to continue, and even in a greater way, to guide the decisions that are made for the future of this city. And we ask as well, God, that You would help each one of us, by the power of Your Spirit, to treat one another, Lord, with Your love, with the respect that each of us deserves as a child of God, with dignity, with honor, and that as we work together on hard issues, that with Your wisdom, we will continue, and even in a greater way, forge a path forward for Menifee that is a wonderful one and a great place to live. So we ask all these things, and we thank You, God, for Your help. Amen.
Thank you, Casey. Councilman Denver, will you lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and moral.
Thank you all. City Manager, looks like we have a presentation on the agenda for this evening. Would you take it away?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. We have a presentation regarding the installation of a great oak in town center. I believe the Regent group is here, Rich Lichtenstein, Nick Bureau. Take it away, gentlemen.
Thank you very much. Mr. Mayor, councilmembers, happy to be back in Menifee this evening for a very, very short presentation, so that you can get on with the rest of your, your business. As you know, in April of 2011, we're very pleased that this, the city approved our specific plan and our development agreement, and we have been working very diligently to build, build out the site. October of this year, many of you probably were at the Santa Rosa Academy groundbreaking and ribbon-cutting, excuse me, not groundbreaking. We have been working towards the infrastructure at the site, and along with that, have had a variety of conversations with some prospective tenants and partners on the land. But this evening, we would like to share with you some very exciting news we are about to bring to the city of Menifee and put place and plant in the heart of the town center, a beautiful oak tree, along with some monument signage around that tree. We would like to extend to each and every one of you an invitation, should your schedules permit, on April 4th, on December 4th, when the midday, when the tree will be, will be ready for a planting ceremony, to come out to the site, if you're, if you're available. I'll leave it to, to your staff to determine who else can make it, and the city attorney, what Brown Act violations that might occur. But it's a very, a very exciting day for us. It will, I've asked Nick Bureau of Regent to describe to you a little bit the mechanics, where the tree's coming from, how it's going to get planted, and your, Andrea Suarez, your Public Information Officer, can provide you with some additional details in the coming days and weeks. So, Nick, with that, let me unveil the, the tree. First one, I think.
Nice. How big is that?
Go ahead, Nick. I'll appear and I'll actually...
Can you show the public as well, please?
Six inches? Eight inches, five?
So, what we're bringing is a 40,000-pound tree from Sunland, California. It's about 40 miles away from here. It's going to be put on a very large truck. It's going to leave the nursery at about 2:00 in the morning. It's going to arrive in Menifee at about 6:00 in the morning. It's going to travel very slowly, and what, what, what's going to happen in the morning is we'll bring it very close to, to the roundabout, in which I will move the slide to get to that. I'm going to go back. This is the site planned for, for the entire town center. The, the area where the tree's going to be planted is in the center of the Old Sherman Road, which is now Town Center Drive, and we will bring the tree close to, to the actual circle, and we will be setting it up for planting. It will be craned on, it will be put on a crane and then hoisted into the large hole where it's going to be, it's going to be planted. We're looking at having you there right at the time they were ready to hoist the tree and lower it into, into the hole to, to actually plant it. The reason we're bringing it at this time is because the tree weighs 40,000 pounds, and from a constructibility standpoint, it makes sense for us to have the tree in place first, and then build what is going to be all the wall detail and monumentation sign, all the monumentation around it, which is detailed right here. So this is what the wall's going to look around the tree, and we're going to have freshly poured curb and freshly poured pavement and asphalt, so we don't want to jeopardize damaging any of that. So it makes sense for us to bring the tree and then build around it, and it'll be a great chance to have all of you out there.
Deputy Mayor?
Yeah, first of all, I just want to say kudos to your crew. Adam's really a touch of blast bringing a beautiful tree like that, and he's the symbol of, of our city, but I'm curious, many of you here, I'm sure, have had large palm trees planted on our property, and we're told they can do that because it has a very short root base. But I was, I thought oak trees had a very deep root base. I'm wondering what kind of subterranean garage it has to dig to be able to receive this oak tree?
The box that the tree is in is 48 inches tall, so, so we have, so from a, from a digging standpoint, we're going to be in really good shape, and here's why, because the road that's out there, we haven't brought in, brought in the base and the pavement. So it's going to sit in a, in a, in a very good spot. One of the things that the local water agency made us do, they made us steal in case the sewer pipe that's underneath the entire, the entire area. So even if the tree is, the tree's there for 200 years, it's never going to reach the sewer line, and it's never going to tap into it. So we have a clay pipe that's steel encased, that's protected for, in fact, one of the discussions we had with EMWD was they wanted protection for 100 years for that sewer, for that sewer line, and they got more than that.
And an oak tree will what? It could be 300. How, how long does an oak tree, about 300 years?
Well, I think the, I think a lot more than that. I think in, in the reservation at the Pachanga, there's a tree that's more, that's more than 1,000 years old, so, so they can...
Great. Thank you.
Mr. Furman?
Excuse me. Would there be any kind of insurance policy on this tree for a number of years to make sure it don't die or it's replaced?
Yes, yes, there, there, we're, we're right now engaging with the, with Valley Crest, who we're buying the tree from, and we will have a ongoing maintenance policy that ensures the tree every month that you renew that maintenance policy. We will maintain it, and that will, once the city accepts the road from us, it'll be assigned to the city for, for continued maintenance. So, yes, we will have that, and the city has made clear that that's something that needs to be in place for the protection of the tree.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Please, does that...
We hope you're able to join us on your side.
Absolutely.
I'll be there.
I'll be there.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you for bringing such a wonderful amenity.
Thank you. Thank you, gentlemen.
Onto approval of the meeting minutes, the special meeting and the regular meeting of November 6th. Are there any changes? Are there any modifications to the minutes? Minutes are ordered. Onto agenda approval. Are there any modifications to the agenda, Madam Clerk?
No, sir. Approved as posted.
Thank you. Onto public comments. Who will take the first public commenter?
Ann Pika?
Mr. Denver, I see you've been given notice by other members on the city council. They want you out in 2014 and will support a candidate to run against you. I now ask for the mayor and the rest of the city council's help, because on September 24th, I sent the following email to District 4, "Councilmember John Denver, I am present, I am the president of the Sun City Hermosia HOA with a membership of 320. I am the voice representing the members of our HOA on this matter I am about to present to you. As our District 4 Councilmember, we are requesting your assistance in correcting a serious traffic problem we are experiencing at the corner of Ethan Act and McCall Boulevard. The lights at the intersection of McCall and Ethan Act need to be replaced or exchanged to have a right and left turn arrow. This corner is in complete traffic congestion because between the hours of 2:30 to 6:00 PM, and is near impossible to turn left onto McCall due to the heavy flow of traffic from the other side of Ethan Act, Paris End. Traffic is completely backed up on our side of Ethan Act. Cars are forced to sit through three to four light changes due to the signage that comes coming from the other side of Ethan Act must give the right of way to cars coming from the Paris End of Ethan Act. Simple way to correct this problem is to put up left and right signal arrows. This needs to be done before the Frost apartment complex on our side of Ethan Act is completed. Otherwise, traffic congestion will triple. Action to correct this problem would be of little cost to the city of Menifee. We have already had one fatal accident on this intersection this year. Let's take preventive action to see that we don't have any more. I supplied Councilmember Denver with the problem and the solution to this traffic nightmare. You voted to a lot, 5,000, to have the name of Menifee painted on a water tower in the hills in the Menifee that benefit no one. So why not appropriate 5,000 to fixing a situation at the corner of McCall and Encanto that could prevent another death? I have not received a response from Councilmember Denver, but that does not surprise me, as Mr. Denver does not seem to respond to the needs of his constituents. He has continuously voted against the people in his district and criticized those who stood before the city council, asked him not to impose ordinances that hurt them and their families. Councilmember Denver's response to his constituents is, "I don't like it, I don't want it, or you're violating the law." People's slogan come the 2014 election will be, "We don't want it, we don't like it, and you're out of office." Thank you.
Mr. Denver?
In spite of all the insults, I'm going to respond to that. I agree. I do think we ought to work on that. It's going to get worse, that interchange, before it gets better. I never received an email from you at all. Watch your mouth before you talk.
Don't tell me how to watch my mouth, buddy. Watch yours, you're on the diet.
Is there a staff response regarding this matter from the correspondence received?
Yes. The public work staff went out and investigated the situation, and we've made a determination that we can install a left turn signal there. We have it on our list for signal modifications within the city. That list will be presented to the city manager for prioritization of the funds that we have available for those improvements.
Yeah, thank you very kindly. Next speaker, Madam Clerk.
Josie Garcia?
Jake Michael Garcia.
Michael Garcia?
I'm up here today to, I was up here in your last meeting. I complained about an illegal business, does not have a license, and we are still burdened with the same problem as of today. Got a phone call, and basically it was said, "Well, we would do something to make you both happy." For us to be there on a, you have it up here on your plan as a residential, urban residential one, and have to be next to a commercial business who starts work at 5:45, leaves work at, can be as late as 9:00, and come in at 1:00 in the morning, throwing their garbage in their big dumpster, waking people up. You've taken our home away, and nothing is being done. And I'd like to know why you have not shut this place down.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
My three minutes is enough.
Oh, okay. I thought you were, please proceed.
Okay. At least inform everybody here that when you manipulate the zoning code, that is against the law. City of LA, I believe it's Compton, there is a council member under indictment right now for exactly what you're doing. You're letting somebody basically break the law, and because the fact is that you may know him, he may owe you favors, whatever, you guys are breaking the law. The FBI has a, a special place where you can go ahead and report this, and if you're saying you're not doing nothing wrong, then fine, but the bottom line is, if you're showing here on your plan that is residential, and you're letting a commercial person go in there with a fleet of 15 trucks, and they have over 15, 20 employees working at this house, not sleeping at it, working, you would not want this individual living next to you. So why do we have to go through this? He's not grandfathered in. He bought the property after we bought it. It was sold as A1 property, agricultural one, which means you can have one house on it and livestock, certain amount of livestock, and, and, and whatever. Okay? Not 20 trucks. If that was somebody else, they probably would be shut down. I know people on that area who have applied for permit, permits to basically add a second dwelling or to open up a business. They were told no, but yet, this commercial person, because he knows you guys, gets to do it. And something needs to be done about that. And basically, we're being cut off all the time, and you can't give me any answers, so that I can go ahead and say, "Okay, what, what steps do I need to take?" You can use my time to give me answers.
Are you, are you finished with your statement?
Okay, yeah, go ahead.
Okay. Thank you very kindly. Deputy Mayor?
I, is this property over near Leon Road? What's the address of this property?
That's 29195 Leon Lane. That's the address that, that we preside at, and the other one, I believe, is 34 Leon Lane. Leon Lane.
Okay. Well, I don't know this gentleman, and I'm not familiar with the situation.
We have, we have a, one of your first brochures of the city of Menifee, and he sat on a board. So I cannot believe that you guys, you don't know him. You know, every time we come in here, we're cut off.
Excuse me, sir. Your, your time has expired for public comment. During the public comment section, we're not allowed to engage in a long, substantial debate with you on this matter, but we, we want to give you some sort of feedback. Were you finished with your statement, or did you want to continue?
No, I wanted to ask the city manager, from what the gentleman says, and there's always two sides, maybe there's more than two sides, you never know, but he surely deserves a response, and, and an in-depth response. If, if that business that he's referring to is staying there, then he ought to know why, if it's going to be pulled away, he ought to know why, and that information should be made public.
Yes, thank you, sir. What I can tell you right now is there's, A, an active code enforcement case pending, and B, the individual in the business provide, applied into the provisional business license ordinance.
So then, one would, he would then anticipate he's going to get some relief from his concern?
One or the other. Correct.
Okay.
So it's an active code enforcement situation, and so we're precluded from commenting on it in great detail further with you, but once it's resolved, we'll make sure you get all the feedback that you need with the outcome.
I'd like to bring one more thing up. If I come in here one more time, and I, and I have to bow my head, I am a religious man, but if I have to bow my head in prayer, and you're not separating church and state, then I know there would be someone to take that over. Because if you can, if you can basically take the issue and, and do someone wrong, then how in God's name can you go ahead and do a prayer saying you want him to lead you the right way, when you are not being led the right way?
Okay, thank you very much. Your time has expired. Next speaker, please.
Josie Garcia?
I'm Josie Garcia, and I'd like to lead off where he left off. Our prayer said that Menifee is a wonderful place to live in. No, it's not. You would not want these people living next to your house or even on your block. It's not, they make dust, they make noise. Our lives have been totally turned upside down. We came out here to retire, to have a good time. We planted, next door to him, remind you, we've planted over 100 pine trees. We have over 50 fruit trees. We have a beautiful property, and we have to look at that, and then here, this is, and I'm not blaming the pastor, because he doesn't know, that this is a wonderful city to live in. No, I've heard a lot of complaints in here. I've got mine, I've got COPD, I've got asthma and other illnesses, and I can show proof that I have it, and he's got some blacktop in there that is thought to have silica in it. I can't walk in my own backyard, because my COPD is advanced. And so, to let us know, "Oh, we're going to give them one more month, we're going to give them one more week," no! They need to be out tomorrow. When they got, they got a citation, and he took out his big white sign that he has in front of the yard, a residential place, he took down his sign. Then he came over here, and he talked to somebody, and he got permission to put his sign right back up. So with a lot of pride, this man, he walks out there with his hammer, and he puts up his sign again, and here I am, I can make all the noise that I want. We have cars that are coming in to deliver their clothes, their work clothes. We have other, the delivery trucks going through this. This is a complete business. It's like we're living in the middle of LA that is a business district. I didn't come here for that. I paid high on my house. The man who said, "We can resolve that, this," yeah, we can resolve it by getting him out. I don't, there's no way to resolve it. Get him out, or buy me out at a high, high enough property, so I can go buy me another one that'll be substantial to the house that I've got now. And that, and I, I'm, I'm here actually demanding that tomorrow, he doesn't open up. He has no right to open up tomorrow. You can't go and say, "Well, you know, I'm going to get a business license, but I'm going to start my business two years before I apply for my licenses." And nobody here is doing anything about it. So where do we go from here?
Josie?
Do we go to FBI? Do, you know, we've talked to an attorney? We've done a lot of things, but it's going to cost us too much to get him out of there, and it's not worth my property, my amount.
Thank you very much for your time.
And thank you for listening.
You bet. Next speaker, please.
Amy Frann.
Good evening. My name is Amy Frann. I'm a member of the United Church of Christ of Sun City, located on McCall Boulevard and Sun City Boulevard. United Church of Christ was the first city, or, I'm sorry, was the first church that was built in Sun City 50 years ago. At the beginning of this year, the council decided to erect a new sign, replacing the old sign that's there that's kind of not as pretty as the new one. So we are asking a, for a waiver for the variance fee, so that we can erect a new, nicer, more pretty attractive sign to, to bring in more worshippers into the church. And that's it. That's it. I'm easy.
There's, there's an application process for that, and I'm sure staff would be able to share that, that process with you.
Okay.
Before you leave tonight.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next, Mr. August.
Did you get my call yesterday? I left it with somebody over at your church. I've talked to the city manager about that, and I think we had, did we decide on anything? You, you've already gone through the process, right? And you've got the figures and everything. What you, what you're sitting up there for is you want to appeal the fees and the process and the variance.
Right.
Right. So what I'll do at the end of the meeting, I'll put it to my fellow councilpeople, who says, and maybe we can agendaize that or go through the proper process, so you can make your case, and we'll sit and listen to it. Would that be okay?
Okay. Thank you.
Next speaker, please.
Ken Willhite.
Hi, my name is Ken Willhite, and I hope this will be a little less contentious than what we've had before tonight. We go through a lot of flashlight batteries, the non-rechargeable type, and we found out that it's not too difficult around here to turn in your recharge, recycle your rechargeable batteries, but the non-rechargeable kind, it's a real chore to find out how to get rid of them, and I understand they're not supposed to go into the landfill. The community where we lived before had a little collection box down at the city hall, tucked away where you could find it, and drop in your used flashlight batteries, and frankly, I don't know how they got rid of them. I suppose they had a contact with waste management or whoever did the trash recycling. But if, just a suggestion, that if we could do that here, it might be a service that a lot of people could use. The other thing that has happened since we moved here is the CFLs, the compact fluorescent lights, that are being required now, and a lot of new construction. Those aren't supposed to be thrown in the trash. They have mercury, they're dangerous to keep around the house after they've expired, and I frankly don't know how to get rid of mine. I know there's a hazardous waste collection, but it happens every so often, and half the time I have conflicts, so if you could do something for the community that we would know where to get rid of these hazardous items and not break the law and throw them in the landfill, I would appreciate it.
Thank you. Mr. Johnson?
Thank you, Mr. Willhite. I believe you can call Waste Management Customer Service, and they'll send a box out, a very small box out to you, and you can fill that up with batteries. I think it's self-addressed, mail back to them, or they can pick it up on your collection day, if you put it on top of your trash can. I'll check on the light fixtures, light bulbs for you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Katie Benir.
Good evening. I'll let Mr. Willhite know that you can go to Marietta, and they have a drop-off facility, and they have it advertised in the paper, and they take all sorts of things. Tonight, I'm going to address an issue I have a problem with. I understand there was a letter written to the council members by one Earl Phillips, stating that there was no harmful effects by the dumping of sledge in this valley. I have to question why he would take it on himself to write such a letter after the other four members of the planning commission voted to leave in the general plan the mention of sledge and its need to be monitored. How does Mr. Phillips get to represent himself as a representative of Environmental Health Department when he's not employed by them? I've asked repeatedly for his background, for his qualifications. I've got nothing on that. The planning commission voted to leave in the general plan because that was started by the county, and the county knew that it was dumped out here, and then the county went ahead and destroyed all the documents. Now, Mr. Phillips is trying to persuade the city council members, when it's his job as a planning commissioner to have proof of the statements he makes. I have seen no proof from him that this is safe. I've asked repeatedly for his documents. He has none. I've asked repeatedly for his qualifications regarding this issue, and have you yet to receive any documents that he's an expert in the area of sledge? I have an article here regarding the dangers of sledge, as I have read countless articles and reports by highly educated experts in the field stating the dangerous effects of dumping of sledge and then building on them. There have also been letters read by people that are gravely ill. Some have even had doctor statements that their illness was determined to be caused by the exposure of this material, and yet this council can say there is no problem, and turn their back on the health and safety of the citizens of this city. and safety of the citizens of this city. I believe the FPPC should be investigating the practice of Mr. Phillips. He is representing someone he doesn't work for, making statements when he has no evidence to support his claims, and he's jeopardizing the health and safety of the citizens in his one-man campaign to discredit expert statements. The article I have here tonight to read states very emphatically the hazards. This is written by a doctor, Sidney Backus. He demonstrates how municipalities that dry and reuse sledge are at a risk of contaminating their communities with heavy metals and pathogens that are responsible for thousands of premature deaths in the United States every year. More than just raw sewage makes it way, makes its way to a waste management, wastewater treatment plant. The wastewater pump in a, and is put through a process that reduces it to the sledge and that is sent to an on- or off-property location to decompose. The decomposed product that is sometimes put into pellets or bulk and made available for county projects and used as fertilizer, which we've done in this valley for years. Backus, see, the lab reported the presence of arsenic, fluoride, lead, mercury, and the human pathogen Stenotrophosmanos. I hope I'm saying that right. I'm probably not, but...
Katie, I'm sorry. Our timer has got an issue, and it messed up, but that is your time. Sorry.
Okay.
Thank you, Ms. Benir.
Thank you.
Next speaker, please.
Your Honor, those are all the speakers under public comments tonight.
Thank you very much. Onto council member updates and comments. Gentlemen? Anyone? I have to report, it's been a busy couple of weeks for me with the Veterans Holiday. I had the opportunity to share some thoughts at three different venues. One was at Freedom Crest Elementary School, and then the rededication ceremony of the memorial at Sun City Civic Association at Webb Hall was a nice event. And of course, the city's Veterans Day celebration at the city memorial. I also participated in the Student of the Month program with our Heritage High and Paloma Valley students. I, along with council member Furman, attended the Riverside County Division of the League of California Cities Monthly Meeting in Hemet. And this morning, I had the opportunity to deliver some comments to the Citizen University Committee at the University of California of Riverside regarding what's going on in the city of Menifee. It was well-attended, and it was a great way for me to showcase the city. Yesterday, the Finance Committee met yesterday and took a report from our Chandler Asset Management and delivered our quarterly performance for the year, and you should have copies of that in your boxes. So with that, that concludes my updates. Do you have anything, gents? Anything you'd like to share? Hearing none. Onto the consent calendar. I'll entertain a motion on the consent calendar. May I have a second?
Second.
Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember August.
Aye.
Councilmember Furman.
Aye.
Councilmember Denver. Deputy Mayor Edgerton.
Aye.
Mayor Mann.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. Onto public hearing. Agenda item 11.1, Public Hearing for Recommendation for the General Plan Adoption. Now, I have a couple of things I'd like to share. Mr. August, would you like to go first?
Can we make an opening statement on this, Mr. Mayor?
Sure.
Just for the public out there, this'll be the first time in public I've ever worn glasses before, and I was trying them out tonight. And when I put it on, I can see what's in front of me, but I can't see anybody out there. So I don't know whether that's good or bad, but here we go. The council should reach the final approval on the long-awaited general plan no later than December 18th, concluding discussion tonight or on December the 4th, which I believe it will be now on December the 4th. I first want to thank the Planning Center for providing the city with what many feel is a first-class document with a few exceptions. Mark Hoffman and Wendy Grant and the rest of the Planning Center are to be commended for working through this arduous, time-consuming task through the difficult challenge of a changing city management and council leadership. I want to give a very special thanks to the Planning Commission, several of who are in the audience tonight, and the city staff for laying out in the form of recommendations to the council and foundation from which our deliberations will go forward from this point on. I want to emphasize the word "general" because this is a big picture. Definition and characteristics of pieces and how they will look and connect with each other will come later. I need to disclose that I attended the last three planning commission meetings. Being extremely impressed with the efforts and seriousness with which all council commissioners or all commissioners approached this task, their combined effort has made our work on the council easier. Their work clearly has brought more clarity, depth, and understanding and attention to the issues reflected in the public's participation throughout the planning process. Final approval of the general plan is in the end, is the end of a process that marks the beginning of change, rethinking, and adaptation to the always-changing environment. It's just a roadmap to a hopeful destination. Some will be pleased tonight, some displeased, but it will not be in the end entirely to the concerns and wishes and desires of those that are displeased by the outcome. The general plan is a flexible document that will be tested, challenged, and disputed almost immediately by those perhaps with greater insight and vision than myself or others on the council. As long as the city management and the council are willing to always listen and reconsider, the future of Menifee will be bright. Final approval on December, on the 18th will not result in a perfect document, as we on the council are not perfect planners or perfect people or even perfect lawyers, are all-knowing, or do we have a crystal ball. We can only hope over time that this is the right start for the, in the right direction. For me personally, this is new territory. I've consulted many residents and friends regarding issues that will be discussed and decided here tonight. And whatever is decided, I hope reflects well in the minds of those electing me and my fellow council members. That's it.
Thank you, Mr. August. So here we are. Five years and two months later, $1.3 million expended on the effort. Eight different council members, nine different planning commissioners, four city managers, 18 meetings of the general plan advisory committee, 15 meetings of the planning commission, countless meetings of staff behind closed doors with the Planning Center and everywhere for the last four years. It's been a monumental task. This is why we incorporated this general plan. This is why we did it. Local leadership with local control, solving local issues. And with that said, I'd like to, on behalf of all of us up here, I want to thank all the council members, past and present, all the planning commissioners, past and present, each member of the general plan advisory committee, all the members of the public that came before, and to speak at those committees and those commission hearings, exercising your right to have a, an input to this process right here. And so with that said, I want to say thank you once again. And speaking of the process, what we're going to do tonight is we're, I'm going to open up the public hearing after taking a staff report, and we're going to take public testimony. If, we're going to go till 10 o'clock, and if we haven't gotten through it, huh?
Not necessarily.
No, I'm saying if we, if we have enough speakers, we're going to go, I'm going to have the public testimony to 10:00 PM, and then at that point, I'm going to suspend the public testimony and continue the hearing. If we get through all the speakers, I'm still going to continue the public hearing until the 4th of December. So with that being said, Mr. Johnson, would you please proceed with the first staff report for the Menifee general plan before the council?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Members of council, I'm very proud as your interim city manager to deliver the general plan on schedule that we developed and shared with council on July 2nd. Our team, myself, Charles Leclerc, Jeff Wyman, Sean Nelson, Jonathan Smith, Lisa Gordon, we've worked diligently at weekly meetings to get this document to the city council at this time. A large part of our success, of course, is due to our partner, the Planning Center, specifically Wendy Grant and Amanda Tropiano. Without their commitment and team focus, we wouldn't be here together, today, together over the last 20 weeks. We were able to accomplish what the last four years were unable to do as a staff. Thankfully, with the addition of Charles Leclerc, the interim community development director, his 30 years of municipal experience, he's been through this a couple of times. We're here tonight to provide the council the information necessary to discuss and move forward the general plan process and adoption. I also want to make sure that we thank and recognize the Planning Commission for its work in reviewing and recommending the general plan to the council. As the mayor stated, there's still much work to do, but we're ready to move to the next chapter, and I'm going to turn it over to Charles Leclerc. He's going to lead you through a staff presentation with Wendy Grant from the Planning Center, and take it away, Charles.
Thank you. Mayor, council, the item before you tonight is clearly the update to the city's general plan. This document and the supporting draft environmental impact report and technical reports are the culmination of years of work, as was just mentioned. These documents are based upon the draft land use map that was accepted by the council in early 2012. That led to the material that's before you now. The map is an outcome of an extensive community outreach effort involving multiple meetings, workshops, general plan advisory committee meetings, general plan, excuse me, planning commission, and city council meetings. State law requires that each, that each city have a general plan. Within that general plan must be seven mandatory elements. We have those seven mandatory elements plus two discretionary elements that we're proposing that you adopt. As was commented on earlier, the general plan is a philosophical document. It gives the big picture of how the community should grow. It establishes in writing goals, policies, and the vision for the community. Specific development that will result from this general plan will occur once the council has adopted development standards, development ordinance that will follow from this general plan. That is something that staff has already begun to work on, and you will begin receiving pieces of that in the relatively near future. That being said, however, the general plan is a dynamic document. It will change as the community's desires change, and so you have the opportunity, as need be, to amend the document to meet the needs of the community. As was commented by Mr. Johnson, the Planning Center is here tonight. Wendy Grant is here to give you a PowerPoint presentation that will go into more depth in regards to general plans and this general plan in particular. Following her presentation, you'll have the opportunity to ask questions of her, myself, and other staff members as appropriate. It is noted that within your staff report, there are a number of requests from individual property owners for changes to their proposed designations. The Planning Commission reviewed all of those as individual members in reviewing their staff reports. However, as a group, they only discussed a few of them. Their recommendations on those are included in the resolution, or will be included in, no, it has been included in the material that has been presented to you, and your decisions on those requests will be reflected in the resolution that you ultimately will have in front of you for adoption. With that, this is a opportunity for the council to hear from the experts that created this document, and you will have the opportunity to hear from the public in regards to the material as well. With that, I'll turn it over to Wendy Grant from the Planning Center.
Thanks, Charles. Well, it truly is a pleasure to be before you this evening to present this overview of the general plan. It has been a long time coming. I can remember attending the first birthday celebration and starting to talk to the community there and watching folks come up and actually see the old map and actually where the boundaries were. It was the first time everybody was able to see what the city looked like. And I would hear things like, oh, that's in our city? Oh, you know, and we, it was really wonderful to start to see how the community was evolving and shaping. And so through all of this discussion, we have come to this point. We have arrived at this culmination of all this work, all the input from the community. I see faces out there that I've seen through all three years, and it's wonderful to see that continued investment in this plan. So tonight, what I'd like to do is share with you a very high-level overview of the general plan, and then, once I'm finished and once we're finished with public comment, be available to answer questions. There may be questions tonight that you have that require answers of some of our specialists, either a traffic engineer, a biologist, a cultural resources person. And if we have those questions and we need that expertise, we will bring those experts to you at the next meeting. So we will answer all the questions that we can, but if there is some necessary follow-up, we will do that. So what I'd like to generally do is go over the general plan process, talk a little bit about the elements that are included in the general plan. These are the chapters and things that are required by the state to be in the plan for those that aren't familiar with them. And then ultimately, what we'd like to do by the end of this process is to get direction from the council as far as planning commission recommendations, changes, or other things that you would like to see in the plan, and then ultimately, adoption of the plan and certification of the EIR. So a general plan is really one of the cornerstones of decision-making in a city. It helps to guide the social, physical, economic, and environmental world as far as a city goes. It can't be just one or the other. It has to be something that's comprehensive and looks at all four of these components. And as the mayor mentioned, this really is an important tool for self-governance. We heard that in the very beginning, that the community wanted local control, and this is one of the main planning documents, and actually can be used by all other departments as well, as I'll explain later, to establish decision-making and self-governance. As I mentioned, we are at the first birthday. This is a snapshot of one of the posters that came out of the first birthday. And so we do have a lot of planning and governance-type requirements for the general plan, but it really, it also encapsulates all the community's aspirations. There are some balancing of interests because there may be competing interests, but it's always rewarding for me to see that there are so many things that the city has already started to work on and to achieve that already were on this poster and several others that we had. So the city has been consistently working toward striving and achieving the community's goals. The general plan is state-mandated. It talks about community priorities. It has a vision statement in it, which I'll go over in a minute. It provides an overview of how the city will grow. And this is the, the general plan land use map that we'll talk about, talks about what the city would look like at ultimate build-out. That was if all of the land in the city was developed. That may take some time. It may take another 50 or 100 years. It just depends on certain outside conditions. But the idea is to outline a vision as to where the direction of the community should go. And then ultimately, it's used by staff and the council and all of the city as a document to guide decisions. In the general plan, there are some mandatory components, and the first is a vision statement. So that is used to help guide all the goals and policies that are drafted. Ultimately, we're always trying to work toward achieving that vision. There are also seven required elements. And elements serve as the chapters of the general plan, and those address land use, circulation, housing, safety, noise, open space, and conservation. At the outset of this process, when we were first being interviewed for the job, the community had said, and the council had said, it's very important to us to really understand economic development strategies, and then also to address community design. Because we're trying to establish the city, and this is the first general plan, we have a lot of established communities, and, and people wanted to know, what is Menifee? What is that? And so this chapter was added for, to be able to start talking about those things, either streetscapes or entryways or other things that we'll go over. And so these are optional elements that the city elected to add because they were important, but they're not required by the state. There are also implementation strategies, and the implementation strategies are adopted along with the general plan, but they are, they're, they're parallel but not a part of the general plan. And the reason for this is that the implementation strategies are really the action items, the to-do list for staff, and we want to make sure if they were adopted with the general plan, every time we'd achieve something, we'd have to do a general plan amendment. So it's a tool that's used by staff to help with council priority setting, budgeting, and other things, and a way to look at performance. You know, what kinds of tasks have we been able to achieve in the year? And then also, what timeframes? So I'll talk about that a little bit more later. And the last part of a general plan is the environmental impact report, or as we call it for short, because it's so long, it's an EIR. And in establishing all of these things and looking at the traffic and the land use and providing open space for the community, we also have to understand what the potential environmental impacts could be of implementing the plan. And so the EIR is the mechanism to do that.
Deputy Mayor.
Yes, thank you, Wendy, and very well, very well presented. Looking up there at... Looking up there at the previous slide where it said the seven required elements, I know it's mandated by the state that when you have a general plan, you take each one of these seven elements into consideration. I think sometimes where there is some misunderstanding is that there's suggestions regarding each one of these elements is mandated. Whereas, if I'm not mistaken, the courts have made it very clear regarding each element, all they can do is provide suggestions, and then it's up to us to consider those congestions.
There are certain things that are required by state law, and I would have to go back through and see what the government code actually states and the verbiage for that. So they do explicitly state some things that absolutely have to be addressed, and then they add a bunch of other --
It have to be addressed, which is --
In the general plan.
Right. So in other words, they can say, "You must look at a housing element. You must look at open space. You must look at land use, et cetera." But from everything I've read about court documents, once you've evaluated, that it doesn't -- and then they will have suggestions regarding each one of those elements. But those are under the law suggestions, not mandates, that's as I understand it. Is that not correct?
I'm not sure. Maybe Julie could help clarify?
Mayor, ma'am? I think what Councilmember Edgerton is referring to, excuse me, Deputy Mayor Edgerton is referring to is the fact that the state doesn't dictate specific outcomes. Rather, it says merely that you must examine these areas, such as open space, conservation, housing, whatever, and evaluate the balance within your community, the various policies that will affect those issues.
Yes.
Thank you.
Please, take it away.
All right. So as was mentioned, there was a very extensive outreach program as part of the general plan, starting from the first birthday celebration, community meetings all throughout the city, meeting with different agencies that have been involved, property owner meetings. The general plan advisory committee was great. They consistently met and dealt with some really tough issues. They were the kind of first line of defense to really talk about these things. And then, obviously, we're here at Planning Commission and City Council, the final stages of the outreach. And so there has been a lot of dialogue and interaction with the community, so the community can feel really proud that they've been able to put their fingerprints on this plan. So the way that we -- the process rolls itself out is that we start with the visioning, and that's the area in the green. There's three phases. The visioning, developing the land use plan, and then drafting the general plan and EIR and implementation. So the black box shows that we are in that final phase of the general plan and implementation. It is true, the general plan is a living document and should be updated as the community's aspirations change. But the intent is that the general plan should be high-level enough and general enough that changes should not be all of that frequent. It's supposed to be that blueprint. So when it's necessary, it's absolutely the right thing to do to amend the plan, but it shouldn't be something that is thought of right away. It shouldn't be just, "We'll amend the plan every year." It's a 20-year vision for the community. So when we're talking about vision, way back in September of 2010, the council arrived at a vision statement, and it was to enhance the quality of life, provide diverse neighborhoods, so a mix of neighborhoods and housing choices, so that a variety of families and individuals' age ranges can live in the city. Looking for a vibrant downtown, we heard a lot about the need for a sense of place. Where do people go? We want a gathering place to go to. So really, that community center, the town center that we're in here. Preserving and promoting historic and cultural resources. When we're trying to look at the things, what defines Menifee, really understanding what those are and integrating them into the community fabric as much as you possibly can. Enhancing and developing that trail system, we'll talk about it a little bit later, but the Trails Committee went out and walked all of the trails in the community, which is a wonderful effort and resource. So really building upon that as a regional asset. Looking at partnerships with bigger businesses, such as the college, with the Regional Medical Center, and really starting to figure out how we can build upon the assets that are here within the community. Looking for access, alternative access to transportation, so if it's rail, bus, rapid transit. We actually have an NEV plan, which is a neighborhood electric vehicle plan in the general plan. Looking for other ways for people to get around the city without having to get into their car. Developing, so that's the golf cart and neighborhood electric vehicle plan. High-quality development, that was really important. What does, you know, when you come to Menifee, you want to know that this is a wonderful place to live, and the quality of life, and that should be able to be demonstrated visually. And amenities and public services also play into that, you know, looking at the schools and the parks. How does that enhance quality of life in Menifee? And then the last part of the vision was to command a high-level performance in all aspects of the city's operations. So it's a high standard. It's holding applications that are coming into a high standard, and then the same thing with, you know, how the city responds to its day-to-day operations. So overall, briefly, there are some highlights of the general plan that I'd like to call out, because after this, what I will do is go through very quickly each one of the elements and what those highlight. But the general plan build-out in this land use plan, in this general plan, it reduces the overall city population as compared to what Riverside County had. And we, that's what we heard. We liked the rural atmosphere. That's one of the things that is one of the key characteristics of Menifee. So in this case, we actually reduced city population, and we preserved rural character. There's lots of areas that are designated for lower-density residential and protecting those established neighborhoods. Looking at the economic potential along the corridors, the I-215 is another one of the city's major assets. And so we looked at developing Economic Development Corridor land use, which I'll talk about in a little bit. And then the town center, this community center core, that downtown area, the place for people to gather, is envisioned in the plan as well. We heard a lot from the community in the outreach that one of the things that defines Menifee to them is all of the natural landforms, the hillsides. As you're driving through, it's the ridge lines and things that they see. So there are provisions in the plan to protect some of those natural landforms. And then to build upon the trails. Very proud of the trails in this community. So the trails are definitely a highlight of the plan. Enhancing the community identity, looking at that community design element and starting to identify features and a strategy to start creating identity for the city, recognizing those established neighborhoods. The implementation plan will actually have some action items to do that, but this gets going down the right path. And then lastly, the intent of this general plan was to be designed as a web-based plan. And what that means is that we have worked with staff and the IT department to put everything up on the web. And this doesn't mean just being able to download a PDF. We wanted it to be on the website so that staff, the community, council, planning commission, everybody is looking at the same general plan all of the time. Now, that doesn't mean it can't be printed, because I know not everyone has access to the web. But the idea is that this becomes a tool and a resource that's easily accessible to the community, and so that they can use that as, you know, they're looking for information, and then the council can use it for decision-making. So overall, as far as the RCI, kind of comparison to when we first looked at the RCIP, what we did was we simplified the plan. What we heard was that it was a kind of a challenge to implement. There were a lot of complexities to overlay zones, so you'd have an underlying land use and an overlay zone on top of that, and it was very hard to administer. So we looked at streamlining some of the land use categories and also streamlining some of the complexities of the policies. It doesn't mean we got rid of them all. We just reorganized it to make it more user-friendly. We looked at, so reducing the number of land use designations, because many of the things that were being addressed in the RCIP could actually be addressed in the zoning code. So we looked at streamlining that. And then, as I mentioned, removing some of those foundation components, overlay components. It just was very complicated. So we took the essence and the best ideas out of those components, if you will, and then folded them into the plan. We also added new land use categories, including a public land use designation for schools, for utilities, a specific plan designation. The city has about 16 specific plans, and so those are now documented in the general plan. And then we added the Economic Development Corridor and a residential 20 to 24 dwelling units per acre category. And that was primarily to address some of the requirements that are prompted by the state for the housing element. So you may wonder, where do we even start when we look at a general plan? How do we start to decipher what land uses should go where, what's most appropriate? And we really start by boiling it down to the essence of what the community looks like. And this is a very, very kind of basic map that shows that. So the areas in yellow are showing residential villages. They are showing rural residential edges, which are primarily along the boundaries of the city, which makes sense. Those rural residential edges transition into what we call residential villages, which are more of the state-planned communities. So when you have Menifee lakes or other, you know, subdivisions and things that have been master-planned, those become kind of contained villages. We also start to look at things like non-residential uses. So the red areas are commercial areas. So you can see in the town center, there's a large kind of core of commercial, and there's commercial scattered throughout the city, which is actually a good thing, because you want to make sure that people are, have access to commercial in all areas of the town, as opposed to having to drive to one central location for that. And you also see purple areas. And the purple represents either some sort of industrial use, because we need business park and industrial uses to support the fiscal sustainability of the community, or maybe some sort of business park or office use in there as well. And then the tiny blue uses you'll see are those public facilities, and those are also scattered throughout the city, which is very appropriate. So we try to look at the distribution of uses and then how the patterns start to work. Oh, and I forgot the green. The green areas, which are one of the community's assets, are the hillsides and the open space areas. So this is the boiling it down to the essence of the plan. And so from that, we actually start to create these categories, and you get the proposed land use map. So the overall changes to the plan really only affected about 20% of all of the city's acres, so about 5,700 acres. And those are primarily because we added the public land use designation. We added some of the open space and conservation designations to the hillsides. We added the Economic Development Corridors, which are the areas in purple, and a few of those smaller parcels in brown, I don't know, you can sort of see them on the screen, but for the residential areas. And then there were some things that were administrative cleanup, so maybe some of the land uses didn't match what was on the ground. But 40% of all the acres that did change have to do with either public facilities or open space designations. So what that means is 80% of the land uses from the RCIP generally remain the same. So the intent isn't to go and start from scratch on all the city's land uses. The intent is to look at the fabric that's there, memorialize the things that are established and should remain, and look for those opportunity areas for change, and that's what we did. So I think we have, I just went over all of these things. So the specific plans that we added, which are very light on the map, but they're light brown. The city has 16 specific plans, and the majority of these plans were actually approved in the county. So what we did was we accommodated those plans, because they were already approved, and we folded them into the build-out assumptions. So when we do a land use plan, we also have to come up with a total population number, a total number of dwelling units, and total number of retail and non-retail square footage. So we folded all of those plans that were approved into the assumptions that we made and reflected that specific plan land use designation. This is also helpful, because as you may have experienced through, you know, the past three years, sometimes there are small refinements to specific plans as they're implemented over time. And so that way, it would prevent the city from having to come back and do a general plan amendment every time one of the little land uses was designated on the map. So the land uses, you essentially go to the zoning code and the map that's approved in the specific plan, and that is the land use that will apply to each one of those areas.
Wendy, you have a question, but could you go back to that slide?
Sure.
The, where our, where our border, city border goes through a specific plan, are the, are the, is the future population in the specific plans outside of the city, are those folded into our future population numbers, or is it just within the city boundaries?
It's just within the city boundaries. So we took those land uses, and so we had to make different assumptions. So for instance, if a specific plan was entirely within the city, we could just take the bottom-line number for that.
So as we go through our municipal, we're getting ready to enter a five-year municipal service review process in 2014. If, if the border were to shift eastward someday, does that create a requirement to update the general plan?
Well, if any part of the border did, you would. You would have to amend, because you're amending the boundary. And the other interesting part to this whole thing is that there is no, the city's sphere of influence is contiguous with the city boundary.
And that was, that was required by law. We couldn't extend the sphere of influence except to our contiguous border until we reached five years.
Correct.
Right?
Right. And so with any of those changes, it would require a general plan amendment. So if you start shifting the boundaries, we would have to look at the, what land use designations would go there and do assumptions for those properties as well. And so you would do an update of the whole build-out at that time.
Thank you.
So another component of the general plan, that is probably one of the highlights of the land use element, is this Economic Development Corridor designation. And the, originally, you may have heard it called in the RCIP as the giant purple blob. And the giant purple blob, in effect, is still showing up on the plan, but what the plan has done is gone through, and because the 215 corridor is such an important asset, and because we want to make sure that each one of these areas thrives, we established a mix of uses, a proposed mix of uses for each one of these areas in the general plan. So the EDC has actually been broken up into different nodes that reflect a different mix of uses for each area. So some down by Scott Road, we're looking at more business park and office uses, whereas the purple areas, the EDC by the town center, would be more of a retail, allow for some residential and some office. So essentially, what the EDC is, is a giant mixed-use designation, but with some direction in the plan as to what the preferred mix of uses are in each area. It does allow for horizontal or vertical mixed use. So what that means is that it could be a mix of uses next to each other, so say a commercial and a residential, or it could be ground-floor commercial with residential above. In this case, it allows for a maximum of 20 to 24 dwelling units per acre. In the RCIP, the giant purple blob originally allowed up to 40 dwelling units per acre. And so based upon the feedback that we got from the community on what scale of development they'd like to see, this has a maximum of 20 to 24. And then the general plan divides each one of these, all the purple EDC areas up into five sub-areas. And we can go into that in a little bit more detail later, if you would like explanations about each one of those sub-areas, but I'll save that for Q and A, since we have a lot to cover. So the RCIP versus the Menifee general plan. The RCIP had a population of 197,000 people, give or take a few, 65,000 units, and about 35 million square feet of retail and non-retail square footage. So the Menifee general plan now has a population of 158,000, almost 159, 63,000 units, almost 64, and then increases the retail and non-retail opportunity up to about 52 million. So that was something that when we were hearing the desire to have jobs and economic sustainability, that supports that. So we have about a reduction of about 38,000 persons in the build-out population and an increase of about 17 million square feet. Briefly, I wanted to cover the housing element as well. This is one of the few, so I'll go through each element and give you an overview of them. The housing element is one of the few elements that requires review by the state, the Department of Housing and Community Development. So as we have gone through this general plan process, and as we received preliminary conceptual approval of the land plan that we are to study in the environmental impact report, approval of the land plan that we were to study in the environmental impact report, the housing element was drafted, and a copy of the draft housing element was sent to HCD for their review and consideration. They've conceptually blessed the housing element as we have submitted it to them, and we have, should the council adopt the general plan, then that housing element will be certified. So it's certified contingent upon council approval. It essentially is provided, there's a regional housing needs assessment that each community is provided, so demonstrating a certain number of units and certain affordability levels. And SCAG has these targets, and SCAG is the Southern California Association of Governments. So as we talked about, all these agencies are also involved in some way in the general plan. But we work through that with SCAG and show them how we are meeting these targets. And I should clarify that the, the housing that we have to accommodate, we have to demonstrate the land plan can accommodate the units, but it doesn't mean you actually have to construct them. And so the housing element ensures that the city can provide choice. So you have a range of single-family homes, mobile homes, town homes, so it's a range of affordability, it's a range of lifestyle, and then you get diversity in housing choice. So Menifee, in the round four housing element, was required to address a twenty-seven hundred unit RENA, as we call it, the Regional Housing Need Assessment. And so as I mentioned, it's been conditionally approved by HCD. And we worked very closely, because we actually had to secure the city's portion of the RENA from the county, so we had to negotiate and make sure you got, you know, your fair, your fair share, but you got to actually, we were able to negotiate with the county fairly well, and we have a good RENA number. And then we were able to secure that conceptual approval in one letter. So they reviewed the plan, we talked to them ahead of time, and that's very unusual to get that kind of approval from HCD so quickly. A lot of times, you'll submit something, and there's a lot of back and forth, and you're having to argue. And the way that this was approached and the, the strategies in that housing element were very palatable to them. So in the housing element, we really tried to focus on areas that were infill sites, because we, we know that rural areas and outside areas are very important to the city. And then we also, to make it even more complex, because housing element law is not simple, there is a round five RENA that's coming up. And because of the general plan has taken a little bit of time to get to where we are, we've, the round five deadline has kind of caught up with us, so that's already in February. But we anticipated that, we knew that that round five was becoming, and so the land uses that we are showing in the general plan will accommodate both the round four, which is due now, and then the round five, which will be due in February. Which is a nice thing, because you don't want to have to go back and try to find more sites and have to do general plan amendments. So that's why it's important to mention that. So the areas that we looked at, and to help satisfy some of the housing element requirements, we added that new category, which is the twenty to twenty-four dwelling units per acre. And the dark brown areas on the map are the areas where those changes were made. And so what we tried to do was locate them in areas that were either close to transit, close to the two fifteen, close to, say, the college, so it would make sense to have higher density near the college where people could walk, and then in the Sun City area as well. And just to give you a little bit of context, because I know there's been a lot of discussion about the twenty to twenty-four dwelling units per acre and why that's necessary, here's a list of all the, some of the other jurisdictions in the area. And each city has to demonstrate kind of affordability criteria, and Mark Hoffman is here, he's our housing expert, if you have questions on that as well. But in other surrounding jurisdictions, they were required to provide a minimum of thirty dwelling units per acre. The county was required to go and find places that are up to thirty dwelling units per acre. We were able to demonstrate that we could satisfy HCD's requirements by only going to twenty to twenty-four, because we heard the community say it's important to keep it as low density as possible, and so that was our approach, is to get in there.
Deputy Mayor?
Well, thank you very much, Wendy. Just clarification, I think, I don't want to get off on to the reasons why it's good to be certified by the state, but just wanted to make the point for public information that it's not necessary to be certified by the state. We can be self-certified, in which case we would have more latitude. Granted, there are potential legal implications that we would have to defend, and ideally, we do want to be certified by the state. I just want a clarification there.
Certainly. That's a policy decision that the council can make, absolutely.
Thank you.
I think I've hit all of these points, that the, the plan, if we submit it with the units that we have, has been conditionally blessed by HCD and satisfies both round four and round five, and then that, as, as the deputy mayor is mentioning, helps to reduce the potential for legal challenge. So, and those are some of the more complicated elements. I'm going to go more quickly through the remaining elements and just provide an overview of the topics that are in there, so we can get to the, the Q and A. The circulation plan is necessary, it's just how people, how people get around town. It's a roadway system, it's bicycles and pedestrians. We are working with a new mandate called complete streets, where we not only look at the rights of way for roadways, but we also have to accommodate pedestrians and bikes. Public transit, neighborhood electric vehicles and goods movement, and then scenic highways, those were also highlighted in the RCIP and carried forward into this plan. We combined the open space and conservation elements into one chapter, because there's so much overlap between the two that it kind of makes sense to marry them. And the state is fine with that, as long as we've addressed both topics. And so in this case, it's a little bit more broad brush of the topics, which range from parks and recreation, we get the trails that are so important, but then we start looking at resources. So it's the conservation is the resource part, if it's agricultural, water, energy, bio, those are all addressed in the open space and conservation element. As I mentioned earlier, the Trails Committee put in many hours walking the trails and mapping them on the ground, and that was a very valuable resource for us to use as a starting point for the general plan. Certainly, there's going to be refinement as things go along, but I think that is an effort that should be complemented, because we don't always see that level of commitment in all the other jurisdictions we work with. We do have parks requirements that are addressed, so typically, the Quimby Act requires that you have a minimum of three acres per thousand persons, and so we base that off the population of seventy-seven thousand. And then, essentially, because we can demonstrate that the city already meets that three acres per thousand requirement, then we can request that the minimum requirement be up to five acres per thousand. So that's what's implemented in the general plan, and that will complement more the open space and parks opportunities that the community had wanted to see. And then the element also preserves the natural landforms. Safety element is one of the essential elements, because we want to make sure that everybody in the community is safe. So we look at things like seismic and geologic issues, flood hazards, fire hazards, emergency operations. It's also an important element, because what we can do is we can overlay flood zones with land use maps and fire hazard areas and those sorts of things, so that we can make sure that the most appropriate land uses are avoiding these hazardous areas to the greatest degree possible. Noise is one of those elements that probably doesn't get as much attention as it deserves, but what we do is look at two topics there. It's noise-sensitive land uses, so, and they're usually from either stationary or non-stationary uses. And so it will address everything from stationary uses, which could be, you know, machinery noise and relationship to residential areas. It could look at things like traffic, so on the two fifteen, what you're looking at is a noise contour map right now. So you'll see the noise levels and how they change as you go further away from the two fifteen. And then ultimately, what that does is that helps to lead to the regulations for the noise ordinances and what noise levels are acceptable and not acceptable in the city. So community design is one of the optional elements, and we have incorporated topics like community image, rural design, because how do we continue to enhance that, you know, character that everybody cherishes so much? Design quality, so starting to look at things about developing design guidelines, addressing corridors and scenic resources, looking at design in those economic development corridors. So not only do we allow for a mix of uses, we want to make sure those uses are quality, because those are the windows onto the community. And then the last part of it is the community design features, so it's the details of the landscaping, lighting, and signage. Now, the general plan will not get to the level of detail of saying a sign should go here, here's the type of tree. What that does is it will be implemented in the implementation action section, but what it does is it talks about creating some of these strategies, and then the council can prioritize what things are important and when those should happen.
Mr. August?
Yeah, just a quick question, Wendy.
Yeah.
We're probably going to talk about this a little more at the, throughout the evening. How many, how many acres of open space are designated throughout the city?
Give me one minute, and I can tell you. No?
Just approximately, fine.
Well, open space recreation, we have about seven hundred and twenty-five. Open space conservation, we have sixteen hundred.
Was there a difference between open space and designated, would you say recreational space?
One is recreation, so those are the areas that are more parks. So you'll look at the map, you can see the very dark green areas are the conservation areas, and those are typically where you have topography, topography and hillsides. And the recreational areas are typically where there are parks or other amenities that could be used that aren't that conservation hillside area.
So the hillside area is a separate area unto itself?
It's the open space conservation designation.
Open space conservation.
Yes.
Let me ask you this last question here. We designated, in your general plan, you designated some of the hillspace area, open space, correct? Those, that open space is controlled by state statutes, correct? Not the general plan, but state statutes. Would you agree with that?
Well, it depends on which areas you're speaking of.
I'm saying, there's, there's ten, I saw ten statutes the other day that, that the open, our open space designation has, that, that our open space designation is tied to. That's the governing authority. Those are state statutes, not, not the city's general plan. What are the governing documents on that open space on the hillside properties? What's, what are the governing documents? Not the general plan, I wouldn't think.
Well, the, Charles, can you provide additional clarification?
I believe what you're referring to are the guide, the state guidelines to establish the general plan.
Those are not guidelines, those are laws, those are statutes. It says it right, right in front of me, those are statutes.
Then it's one of those issues we'll have to come, we'll have to get that section of the statute.
Okay.
Bring it back to make sure that it's clear, the authority that the city has, and the opportunities that are allowed in this general plan.
Okay, thank you.
We ready for economic development? We've got three more slides, and then we get into the details. So the last element is another optional element, which is the economic development element. And it provides strategies to make sure that we have programs that the city can continue to thrive from, you know, a workforce opportunity, recruiting the right types of businesses, marketing where it needs to, and really looking at how to continue to evolve and get out there to attract the types of businesses that you want, make sure that, that the community has, so if someone grows up here, they can continue to work here, they don't have to go drive somewhere else for a job, and really making sure that's kind of an iterative process. So that one is a little bit more dynamic, I think, than even some of the other elements, because that is an ongoing, everyday type of strategy that needs to be considered. And this last slide just provides a snapshot of the implementation action table, and to reiterate, it is adopted along with the general plan, but it is a separate tool. So that way, it won't require a general plan amendment once you decide to update it. And so what it will show is how each one of the action items, what element it relates to, it identifies a responsible department with each action, it identifies timing, so we've looked at it and taken our first pass at what we think it should be, if it's one to two years, if it's two to five years, if it's ongoing. So this may be something that can be used by staff, by the council to go through, and you might be able to update these things every year and decide how, you know, what you want to allocate resources to, and maybe change some of the timing on some of them. So it definitely would help be a tool for performance measurement as well. That way, the general plan is not a planning document that sits in the planning department's shelf, that, you know, one of the things that, as the mayor said in the very beginning, this is a very substantial investment by the city. And that's something that's very important to us, that this is not only a planning tool, because our, the joke is that the general plan is the one document that gets used as a doorstop, because it's so heavy. So we want to make sure this is an active document and really used by as many departments as possible. And I do have to commend the city, because when we were preparing each one of the elements, they were routed around to the departments, and we did get feedback from each one of the departments. So it truly can be a document that's used citywide by city staff. And so that concludes my presentation. This is an overview of our kind of next meetings, but I think at this point, I will turn it back over to the mayor and take any questions you may have.
Council, do we have any additional questions of staff at this point? We'll have three more meetings in addition to tonight to ask questions, so any, any questions at this juncture? I have one in reference to, I think I saw it in a previous document, the Highway Seventy-Nine policy area, is that something that we had to consider in our general plan anywhere?
We didn't, we had looked at it, but we, it was determined that we did not need to fold that in.
Good, that's what I wanted to know. Okay, thanks. That answered my one question.
Great.
Mr., Mr. Furman?
I might have one question. Wendy, was there, was there much of the historic element? I didn't see much of the historic element in, like, the old parts of town, is there, has there been recognition for the buildings that were built before nineteen-hundred and stuff like that?
There is a whole cultural resources technical study that was done, and so when you're looking at the general plan, this is almost the Cliff Notes, the summary of all of that. To get to this, there are twenty, you know, there's a very large stack of technical studies, and that is addressed in there. As far as in the general plan, at a high level, it's addressed kind of in the cultural resources, in the conservation area.
Okay. Any other questions of staff before we open the public hearing? Thank you very much for a thorough presentation and condensing it, condensing, what, three and a half years of intense work down into twenty-some-odd slides? So thank you, thank you, Mr. Leclerc, Mr. Johnson, for getting us here. With that said, I'm opening the public hearing at time eight-twenty-nine. And city clerk, have we received any additional correspondence on this topic that's not contained in our package this evening?
Correct, yes, you have, Your Honor, and they're in your red folders tonight, and that is the only correspondence received, in addition to what you have already received in your packet.
And clearly, this was properly noticed?
Yes, Your Honor, it was.
Okay, we'll take the first speaker for public testimony then, please.
Richard Melrose.
Hi, my name's Richard Melrose. I'm a board member of, and I'm speaking on behalf of Quail Valley Community Group, whose motto is helping to make Quail Valley a better place to live. In the past few months, Quail Valley Community Group and several Quail Valley residents and business owners and commercial property owners appealed to the Planning Commission from several respects, asking them to reconsider the general plan's original intention to change the land use designation of many commercial properties along Getz Road through the most central portion of Quail Valley, and many of which are critical to our vision, Quail Valley Community Group's vision of our community's future. And the original intention of the general plan was to change them from commercial to residential. We're very thankful that the Planning Commission agreed with our appeal and voted unanimously to recommend to leave those property designations as commercial, so I really want to thank them for that. them for that. My only points today are to be on record to thank the Planning Commission for their recommendation and also to encourage the city council to accept their recommendation with respect to this matter, which is very important to us. Also, if the city council should decide to consider this matter beyond the Planning Commission's recommendation, then I'd be happy to make myself available at your convenience to answer any questions you might have regarding this. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Melrose. Next speaker, please.
Larry Markham.
Larry Markham, representing Al Wambel. The property is defined here on this exhibit, large exhibit, we're handing out 11 by 17ths of the same. We made our case to Planning Commission and Planning Commission saw fit to make a change and remove the economic development corridor designation and define this in the general plan as your high-density multifamily designation. That was not our original request, but we do support the request, do support that change. And, I don't know if exhibit if I can, the property, it's not showing up. The larger parcel on the north is currently zoned R2. It had an approved apartment project on it for 168, thank you. Okay, thanks. Property right here, it's 10 acres, is currently zoned R2. It had an approved apartment project on it in 2002 that went through the various extensions of time and unfortunately got to the economic downturn and did not get developed. Mr. Wambel bought the property when that designation and that approval was on the property. In consultation with the county, the county encouraged him to purchase the commercial property to the south between that parcel and the church and to change that to multifamily. Mr. Wambel purchased the property and commenced that process via a general plan amendment and a zone change, and that was initiated by the board just prior to incorporation and it has not moved any further. What we would request is that we be designated as multifamily. We are fine with either one of the two designations. Our original request was for the lower designation, but pursuant to the Planning Commission recommendation, we feel that either one of the designations would be acceptable. The problem we have with the economic development designation is the depth of this property and the lack of traffic on Bradley is, we do not think makes it a good candidate for the economic development corridor designation. It's too deep and has limited access and has impacts from the surrounding church and residents with regard to the potential for alcohol sales. So in general, we support the Planning Commission recommendation. We feel this is a very good infill multifamily site for your housing element, and with that we won't have to answer any questions. I'm just about out of time.
Mr. August?
Just like, how are you tonight, Mr. Markham?
Very good.
I'd like to make a couple of comments for it and maybe I can ask you a couple of questions. I'd like to disclose that I have met with Mr. Wambel and yourself regarding the request for change proposed general plan from proposed EDC designation back to residential. A designation, as you said, was just approved prior to us incorporating, I think we incorporated in October and you got the approval in September for multifamily housing, I believe. I believe the property, Mr. Wambel feels that the city is being unfair by redesigning the property to EDC almost at the last minute, according to you, and the change will put perhaps its $6.2 million at risk. I mean, that's how it was kind of explained to me in the meeting that we had. I completely empathize with Mr. Wambel's concerns and frustration. He presents a compelling case. Mr. Wambel doesn't feel that the location of his property is suited for economic activity EDC, but the planning center, staff, and previous council did. Presently, the intersection of Newport and Bradley is commercial on three corners with an auto and retail mall across the street from the Mormon Church. So economic growth in the immediate area is consistent with the existing land use. Mr. Wambel felt in a meeting when he met with me earlier that his property was better suited for a medium-high-density residential. I believe at that time you were planning for 17 dwelling units per acre, but now he feels it's better suited for, oh, you said tonight you'll take either one, the medium residential or the high-density 20 to 24, that's fair.
That's correct.
The site map presented to me when we met a while back, I believe planned for 262 multifamily luxury townhome condos on 14.7 acres. That would be offered to the public as rentals. Is that still the case?
No, they're for sale units.
They're for sale now?
Condo and townhome are for sale units, yes.
Okay. When did that, did that change recently?
No, that's the way it has been. The apartment project that was approved back in 2002 was a rental project. Mr. Wambel has consistently proposed a for-sale product of other townhomes and/or condos or a mix of both.
Okay. The site map that you showed me at the meeting that we had did not, in my opinion, show a lot of creativity, looking like a layout for kind of a, reminded me kind of a military barracks with a little space in the middle planned for amenities. The Planning Commission's recommendation is that Mr. Wambel's property now be changed to very high-density residential. Taking the very high-density residential requirement adjacent to the club and substituting it to Mr. Wambel's property, where in my opinion, because of limited space, Mr. Wambel would have to reduce the square footage, meaning lower rent, well, they're not going to be rented now as you tell me, right? So disregard this.
For sale.
Okay? But they would lower the price of the condos if you have to reduce the square footage, which to me, because of the lack of the space, you would have to reduce the size of the condominiums or townhomes.
Or we would go more vertical on the condominium.
More vertical, okay, that's fair. Let me get back here. May result in a drain. Okay. Taking, I think I'm already here, because of the limited space would have to reduce square footage, meaning lower, let's just put costs or sales price for the units, which I believe if you do that, it could, I'm saying it would, but it could lower the socio-impact and change the socioeconomic condition in that area and may result in a drain. Higher density might result in a drain on our already stretched general fund because of additional city services that would be required. My concern with Mr. Wambel's project, although it's not in my district, it's in Tom Furman's district, is how it will impact the quality of the general welfare in the residents of the Sun City core area and the residents of the single-family area on the east side of Bradley Road behind the auto center. If we are to approve Mr. Wambel's request for very high-density residential, it might very well influence what type of building is approved.
Mayor, ma'am. I hesitate to interrupt because I know that there are some questions here, but the project is not before you. And what is before you is the general plan adjustment. When you get into deliberations, you may wish to have this discussion, but you really are kind of far afield from the general plan issues here.
I am. Isn't he proposing a change to the general plan?
He has proposed a general plan change, but you're really focused on his specific development that is really not before you at this point. Plus, this is public comment, you can comment back, but this is not a topic.
All right. When is it going to be before us?
When he submits an application.
When he submits an application? Okay, so he's going to propose, he's going to propose a change to the general plan, right? When is he going to do that?
He has proposed, the Planning Commission has looked at the general plan and said that his suggestion works for the Planning Commission. That's the issue you need to be concerned with. The specifics of his proposal, his development, really is not before you at this point. And this is, he's publicly endorsing what the Planning Commission did.
So can I just save, just for the record, then, I really don't want to make a decision on this right now, that's not my intention, but I just wanted to put forward to him, these would be my considerations in making a decision, that's all I'm doing.
Yes, but you've become quite specific as to his project.
Well, I, thank you, I am being specific, you know? Isn't that my job?
Not really, not in this context. In this context, it's the class.
So do you want me to stop talking right now, is that what you're saying?
[laughing]
No, I'm asking, I'd be more than happy to stop if that's what you're suggesting.
I think if you have general questions about what is being proposed, that's appropriate, but getting into the specifics and the square footage and the rental costs and so on is really far beyond where we are.
Mr. Markham stood up there and gave us reasons why he feels his proposal is good for the city and why he should get his general plan amendment changed. I'm just saying why I don't think it is good. So would you like me to save that to a later time?
Yes, I do.
Be more than happy to, sorry.
Deputy Mayor Edgerton?
Trying to get some clarification here. You want to provide some residential development? And looking at the general plan, if we have an EDC that does not preclude you from doing residential development within an EDC, does it?
There is a portion that is allowed. What we feel is that the mixed use, either vertically or horizontally, is not a viable concept on this property, given the attributes of this property. We feel it's a far better multifamily site as it was originally zoned and was originally proposed. We think it's a good infill multifamily site and would meet the needs of your housing element.
That really, you're really getting off on to the specifics of your project now, aren't you? The question I had is-
The designation.
Is that you're not precluded from doing residential in the EDC, are you?
There is a portion of the property or a portion of units that could be used and it's on a first-come, first-served basis, is my understanding. Obviously, we have not seen the ordinance fleshed out yet, and that is a concern for us. Multifamily, we understand. The economic development corridor, what I'm assuming will be a zone in the future, we haven't seen and we have our concerns about that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Thank you, Mr. Markham. Next speaker, please.
Just one little question, just one, this is real, easy. From what I see, then, all the entrance to any of the projects along there has to be off Bradley, right?
Correct. The only access to the site is Bradley. We are surrounded by a drainage channel on the west, Salt Creek Channel, 460 feet wide on the north, and the church on the south. And actually, even the access points on Bradley will be somewhat limited because of potential conflicts with the existing access points on the east side of Bradley.
Yeah, no, there's-
Very limited.
I see there's, could be access to that area from Lazy Creek area?
No, that is, there is a drainage channel that basically separates the residential and the church.
Oh, I see, okay, never mind, I see it.
I think it's actually an old street right away that was used for a drainage channel.
Mr. Denver?
Did I hear you say that when you originally bought this, or when Mr. Wambel originally bought this, it was residential, medium-density residential?
The north parcel was residential.
And the south parcel was commercial?
Was commercial.
And so if we were to go ahead and put the economic development corridor, we're changing your zoning from different than what you, as you bought it?
You're changing the designation.
Designation.
Right, not the zoning yet.
And so, in your opinion, that is taking away some rights, changing your purposes, that kind of thing?
Mr. Wambel's not a commercial developer, and so he is a residential developer, and so, yes, we feel it is a, would be a detriment to his ultimate goals.
And did you say that you, before we became a city, you attempted to change it all to residential, the commercial into residential, but it just didn't get finished and they handed it all to us and it-
That is correct. There was a change, there was a general plan amendment and a zone change that was initiated by the board on the southerly piece to change it from commercial to residential, consistent with the northerly piece.
Thank you.
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor. Just following up on Councilman Denver's comments, how was that second area designated when you, when Mr. Wambel bought the property?
The southerly parcel was designated as commercial in the Sun City Menifee portion of the RCP plan, and we were encouraged to purchase it and were encouraged to merge it in as one residential product. The county staff members and the supervisor at the time was concerned that owing to the geometrics of the southern parcel, that it would probably end up being, at best, probably a mini-storage or a RV boat storage or some combination of the two. And we were encouraged to purchase it, did so, and then began the processing, which took unfortunately about a year and a half from submittal to the time we got to the board.
Well, my question, I'm just trying to get to it, when you bought the property, it was commercial, is that correct?
The southerly piece.
Thank you, sir.
And then the, all right, Mr. Denver, then it's my turn.
Then, so if we did not make it an EDC, you'd be content with leaving it commercial and residential the way it is now?
Well, we would probably come forth after your general plan is adopted and we would complete or proceed with the process, you know, the general plan amendments that have been held in abeyance for the last five years, and request a change to residential.
Thank you.
Well, and that really was, that's where I was going with it, and you asked it, the, I know, I know from our staff report, I see the Board of Supervisors ratification and approval unanimously, 5-0, to change the designation on the 30th of September, the day before, the day before we incorporated. So I'm just curious, I mean, we've had other, we've had other stakeholders who were specifically told by the county to wait until Menifee incorporates and handle it there. Had anybody at the county given you or your client that type of advice to wait?
Not that I'm aware of, and because it was, under the county process, you have to go through a Planning Commission review and a board review, it's not actually a hearing to initiate the general plan. So really what you obtained is the board, the commission and the board's concurrence with the initiation of the processing of the actual general plan amendment. I don't know whether that was any reason why they did not say wait, but, and it went to Planning Commission a couple of months before that, and that just happened to be the date that it was scheduled for the Board of Supervisors. And we don't, unfortunately, we don't control that.
Right. Mr. August?
Quick question, and I told you I was going to ask you a question, I was getting around to it, I had one more paragraph. But anyway, I'm very curious about, I hope I can ask this question, but I'm very curious about how the property, the very high-density residential that was at the club, got down to your property, I mean, Mr. Wambel's property, next to the Mormon Church. Do you have any idea how that happened or how many found your property to get that?
We made our presentation at the second Planning Commission hearing, and Mr. Wambel and I, actually, owing to the fact that we could see that it was going to be a very lengthy evening, we both actually left. And I guess there was discussion, is my understanding, at the end of the hearing during Planning Commission discussion, about the potential for the swap. And we were made aware of the potential for the swap and were, it was inquired of us as to whether or not we would be supportive of the swap. And we stated, as we had stated previously, that we had not, we were not seeking the higher density designation, but as opposed to the EDC designation, we would prefer, you know, the multifamily designation. We were actually approached by the original planning director about being the 20 to 24 DU an acre in the original formation days, and we told Dr. Cave that we were not supportive of it, it didn't really meet our targets, and so it was left alone at that point. And our preference would be the under 20 designation, that's what fits for what we want to do.
You were going to, I think you were looking at 1,100 to 1,400 square foot units, and then, of course, if you went to the higher density, they'd have to be probably a little less square footage or something like, I would guess.
Some mix, yes.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Question from staff, if we- Question from staff, if we, down the road, at our next meeting, when we actually get to debating and deliberating the Planning Commission's recommendations, if we were to make a decision to reduce the club property, and then reduce this one, what impact, if any, does that have on our RINNIE submission, does it affect the approval, final approval by the state, does it mess up our numbers that bad?
If you remove sites that we have counted, we have to find replacement sites to demonstrate where those units are.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Denver, excuse me, Mr. Edgerton?
All right, just for clarification, I'm wanting to do the best we can for, for the developer, we encourage development here, nevertheless, this particular developer has no entitlement in reference to what he's talking about, right, so, the council should be looking at not what is in the best interest of the, of the developer in reference to a specific site, but rather, what is in the best interest of the community in reference to good planning, to be a fair comment.
We provide options, and then you make a policy decision on what the best thing is for the general plan, yes?
Thank you.
Mr. Denver?
The mayor mentioned the possibility of, of the concept of just having the property above the club be 14 to 1, but your property be 14 to 1-ish, what does, what is the RINNIE penalty to us if we don't move that 24 to 1 somewhere else?
If I may, Mark Hoffman, who is our housing expert, is here in the audience, and I could have him answer that question, but, just generally, they look for a range of, that we can demonstrate so many units in each affordability level, and then density ranges, and so, if we are removing a certain number of units, and we are lessening the number of 20 to 24, then they may come back and say, we can't certify your element, and then we'd start this debate again, so more than likely, they would ask us to try to find alternate locations if we want to certify, so we're trying to get that number.
The, we are told by some of our council people that the, that to self-certify is no big deal, it, get threatened with lawsuit, and no one's ever been sued, we would, we would get threatened with lack of money, but no one's ever been cut off for money, but we could, could you clarify, please?
I don't have the specifics, Mr. Hoffman would, but there have been cases-
Could we talk to Mr. Hoffman?
Well, before we do that, Mr., if you would, let me just jump in here and try to-
That's not an issue here.
No, that's not at issue here, in fact, if, if, correct me if I'm-
You just brought up the issue.
Well, hang on a second, Hank, please, let me, let me try to mitigate the discussion here a little bit, because we've already taken a presentation from the city attorney on how we do a self-certification down the road, we've been advised by staff, we've got this general plan before us, we have a land use map, and we have recommendations from the Planning Commission, if he can, if we can get a quick feedback from the staff expert, great, but I really don't prefer not to spend a lot of time on the self-certification issue, because that's not at issue tonight, that fair?
I, since you have him here, and the opportunity is, is how available, when else, maybe we could just have a real short explanation of that, that will be brought up again, that's a thing that's discussed, it's the elephant in the back of the corner that's continually here.
If that's the direction of the council, we certainly-
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Markham, Madam Clerk, do you have input to this discussion?
Just a suggestion, as we flow along through the process of a public hearing, maybe it'd be helpful to get your public testimony in, and then begin the sort of discussion you're hoping to have.
I, I've been so advised, but I'll hear your answer, please.
And, and let's see, the answer to the question would be, I often hear, I do a lot of housing elements, I've done probably 50 in the past 15 years, and so, the question of locally certifying or locally adopting a housing element, it comes up virtually in one out of every five communities, and it is true that RDA funds have been taken away, so there's not a threat of loss of funds, you may not be pursued by an advocate, so there may be less of a lawsuit, but I think the bigger question here is that you have spent a tremendous investment in your, in your general plan, 1.3 million, and if the housing, if the housing element is locally adopted, it will be at greater risk of being found inconsistent with the general plan, should a lawsuit occur, it's a red herring, I mean, not a red herring, it's a real concern, typically, general plans are challenged on transportation and land use when they're inconsistent, they're challenged on the EIR, and they're challenged because of a non-compliant housing element, those are the three big ones, and so, my recommendation typically is to, because of all these other things at work, you've got greater investments at hand, is to get the housing element into compliance, because that allows you to do other things, I mean, the general plan is more than a housing element, it's a huge investment, it affects transportation funds, it affects how you're gonna develop over the time, and so, I would put your time and effort into obtaining compliance, if it comes down to one parcel or two parcels, I would advise that it's worth, it's worth the investment to make the decision, get it in compliance with HCD, and then move on to other things.
Very good, did that satisfy you for now, okay, thank you, sir, very much appreciate it, let's, let's move on to the next, let's, let's reserve addition, let's move on to the next speaker, please.
Al Womble.
Al Womble, 5661, the leader of Long Beach, I'm the owner of the property, I've worked for nine years to come up with something that makes a real contribution to the city, we have not ever submitted a plan, so there is no plan on the table for the city to comment on, but I will just comment to Mr. August, though, in the plan that was designed, which was designed by an architect who won two Gold Nugget Awards, we also had about 120 houses, single-family houses, between 1,400 and 2,000 square feet each, they're referred to as condominiums, because they have to be built under the condominium plan, but, and we had four different architectural concepts within the community that we developed, and Ron Goldman, the Director of Planning for the County of Riverside, asked me to acquire the 4.8 acres, because it was sitting out there like a, like an oddity, because it only has 200 front feet, and there's no way you can, 230 front feet, it's 787 feet deep, so there's no way to really develop something functional, you can't have a strip of medical offices, now, we couldn't come up with anything, you know, to be used, but, my goal is to contribute something to the community, and I can do it at the, at either the 14 to 20 unit level, I can do it at the 20 to 24 unit level, I could even, to be very happy to do it as small detached, single-family houses, but the thing I can't do is I can't contribute, I do have a retail background as well, under the economic development EDC designation, I have not the foggiest idea of how to take a property that has no traffic, it has three sides, one side bounded by a public building, a church, one by an irrigation canal, and one by Salt Creek, you can't have ingress and egress, that's what you need to create what you have, and your concept of economic development corridor is buildings where people are going in and working, of buildings where people are going in and, and buying stuff, I can't create that on this site, this is a residential site, and there's no legislation, or there's no vote that you can take that's gonna change it, so, I'm, I have the greatest desire to make this project work, and I appreciate the support that the Planning Commission, the outside consultant has given, to putting my designation back to residential, as, as well as the city planning people, and I hope you will respect their decisions, as well as the observations that I presented, thank you.
If at the end of the day, it does get, if, if at the end of the day, the council approves the Planning Commission's recommendation, that doesn't mean that you have to build to that 20 to 24 land use, isn't that a correct statement?
It's my understanding that on the 20 to 24, you gotta hit 20.1.
Is that right?
It's, it's a rhetorical question.
No, it's my, it's my understanding you have to hit 20.1, and what that means-
Wait, 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 what I mean is, we have a land use map in our general plan that, that could be submitted to the, to the state for certification, that doesn't mean that a developer has to build to that 20 to 24, that's my statement, that's my question.
My understanding is in that, that 20 to 20, 20.1 to 24, you have to build at least 20.1.
No, I don't believe that's the case.
I couldn't come in with 11 units per acre, for example.
I'm sorry I stumped you, Mr. Womble, but I did, who had their button on first?
I did, I did.
Mr. Edgerton?
I, I'm just curious, you're, I don't want to get off on, onto your project, because we're talking about broader issues right here, but you, you mentioned condominiums, and you're saying it's really not condominiums, they're single-family residents, and they begin with 1,400 square feet?
No, there's, there are, there are about 120 houses in the plan, between 1,400 and 2,000 square feet, but since they're not on individual lots, they are built as a condominium, but it is a detached, single-family house with, say, six feet between the houses, six to eight feet between the houses, it's just like one of the projects that D.R. Horton built down here in Menifee on the east side of the 215, where the houses are in that 1,200 to 2,000 square feet, and now, in other communities, they're adopting the real small lots, I'm sure you've read about that, but, but because you don't have the small lots in your program, you build them as condominiums, but they're still detached, single-family houses, so it's not just a whole bunch of townhouses that look like military barracks, what we have, what we have designed is, is done by, you know, an architect who won two Gold Nugget Awards, and is celebrated, and, and, well, you know Randy Morris, you're from Long Beach, Morris TC Partners, they were the fair-haired boys of Long Beach, Randy designed that.
Mr. August?
I, I think where the confusion might be is, I think the discussion at the Planning Commission, last Planning Commission was, that, and, and I, I understand where you're coming from, Mr. Womble, that you, you prefer the very high-density residential, or the lower-medium-density residential, but the trade-off at the last Planning Commission meeting was to, to take the property from the club and move it down there, thereby, it would require 20 to 24 units, and that, and that, and Mr. Hoffman can confirm that, because I believe you said that at the last Planning Commission meeting, if it's swapped for very high-density residential, Mr. Womble would be required to build 20.1 units.
Yeah, well, I, I'm gonna, we're, we're talking about the difference between a land use map and what a developer actually builds, if he builds something less than what's reflected on the land use map, he has that right to submit that application.
True, but it wouldn't require for the very high-density residential?
I know, that's what I'm saying, and we're saying the same thing, but just a different way.
I would be very happy to produce something of great value to the community at either, either density level, and, and including the 20.1 to 24, and bust my butt to get something that you will love, because I have a master's degree in design myself, and I'm very, very anxious to create beautiful design.
Okay.
And I'm sure, if you wanted to build houses that were 2,000 to 3,500 square feet, you would have our permission, we'd love it.
Well, I could build single families on there, what I can't build is I can't do anything with EDC, but I can do something with a lower zoning from, you know, 8 to 14, I just, just don't take, just don't take my residential designation away, I'll, I'll take the plan, I've already spent all the hundreds of thousands of dollars on it, toss it out, I mean, we've taken the plan to a condo map and all that, but now, I just had a study done about six weeks ago.
Mr. Womble, that's actually your time quite-
We've, I think, I think everybody, thank you, Madam Clerk, I think everybody's made their points, and, and you're on record, so I appreciate it.
28% of your housing is still underwater, meaning the mortgage is 120 to 200% of the, of the value of the house, so, it's not quite yet the time to build townhouses.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Next speaker, please.
Simon Wang.
I know. Oh, could we, Mr. Markham, could we get your poster board down from the easel, thank you. Please proceed.
Okay. Good evening, my name is Shimi Wong, and I'm here tonight on behalf of my 77-year-old mother, Mrs. Hui Yu Wong, and she's the owner of approximately 150 acres of property south of Bell Mountain, it's come to my mother's attention that the Planning Commission is recommending that the land use designation and zoning of her property be changed to rural residential, and that the change will effectively deny her the opportunity to see the property develop in her lifetime, because of the necessary public improvements and fees to support the development, it's also come to my mother's attention that a number of her neighbors are advocating for a change to rural residential, because that, they believe that the rural designation will blend more harmoniously with the surrounding neighborhood, she's asked me to convey to you that it is her will and desire to see that the property is developed in a manner that marries the concerns of her neighbors, the city, and market, so that the development is a win-win for all parties, my mother asks that you not foreclose her opportunity to develop the property, but adopt a position that balances the needs of all parties, and designate the property, um, two units per acre, with policy overlay that encourages buffering the edge of the property along Garbani Road, with one-acre lots and half-acre lots behind, to blend with her neighbors, this middle way offers the opportunity for all parties to work together to develop a land plan that serves the best interests of the community, I appreciate your time, thank you.
Question, excuse me, any questions of the speaker? Thank you, next speaker, please.
Earl Phillips.
Honorable Mayor, City Council, members and staff, my name is Earl Phillips, I live in the Sun City core area, I have a home-based business as an environmental advisor, which is basically, I'm an independent environmental professional, I am a registered environmental health specialist in the state of California, with over 15 years of civilian and military experience, I state for the record that my comments, along with the correspondence I submitted to the city, do not recommend, represent the findings of the Menifee Planning Commission, nor do the members of the Planning Commission endorse the contents of my correspondence, to the speaker who leveled the personal attacks against me, thank you for your comments and your allegations, I submit to the city, the city council, and thus this audience, that I am a resident of this city, and therefore, I reserve the right, as a citizen of this community, to present my opinions and comments, without having to justify or defend my qualifications to any narrowly-focused special interest, I reviewed the Menifee general plan and the draft EIR, additionally, I submitted my comments via correspondence to the city council and city staff as a concerned citizen, I am opposed to the inclusion of the topic of biosolids in the safety element of the general plan, I included a very lengthy, detailed background, rationale, and reasons in my correspondence, it is my opinion, based upon my professional experience, and the evidence that I reviewed, that the topic on biosolids is irrelevant to the spirit, the scope, and the intent of the general plan, I request my correspondence be included in the comments sections of the general plan and the draft EIR, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Phillips, any questions of Mr. August?
Earl, you're my planning commissioner, and I appreciate you, and I'm very happy with what you're doing, I, I too have some questions, I've asked some questions to the city as to why that was put in there, and I, I would like the staff to perhaps give us another reason tonight, why they feel that it's important and appropriate to be in there, however, if they decide to leave it in, I do have problems with the last paragraph in there, when it says that is still in the discuss, it's still under discussion within the city, and I would think, looking back, that after our works, our work- And I would think, looking back, that after our works, our workshops, that, that the, the problem and the concerns with it were kind of put to bed. So I don't think under discussion should be in the general plan, and we can talk about that a little bit later, but the staff can maybe today or next time and explain to all of us why they feel that needs to be in, in the general plan, so my comments.
Yeah, that was the reason why I sent the letter to you because my correspondence was very, very detailed. Original correspondence that I sent was very scientifically oriented and based upon actual review of the documents that disputed the allegations. Now, I have a copy of the letter, but you all also have the copy of the letter, and I didn't, based on the advice of the city clerk, I didn't want to get into the weeds on that at this forum. Just wanted to state my opinion and let it be known for the record.
Deputy Mayor.
Mr. Phillips, I won't call you a commissioner, you don't want to be recognized as commissioner. I've never had the pleasure of meeting you personally. I've read a considerable number of works that you've written, i.e. through emails, et cetera. I've been quite impressed with the research and, and the clarity in your message. In reading your material, I've had difficulty in being able to look at anything other than agreement with what you write usually. My only concern with your comments tonight is that you felt that, now that you're a public official, that you're being vilified, that perhaps when you write, you have a right to write something, and under the Constitution, you certainly do. But also under the Constitution, as a public official, you'll find that if you're sworn at, that you're vilified, that accusations are made against you, that you're called terrible names now that you are a public official. Sir, I simply want to say, welcome to our world.
Thank you very much. I have been humbled by not only my opposition, but my support.
Councilmember Furman.
I noticed in some of your comments here, which I was quite impressed with, that the, the application to this stuff on the land is intended to amend the soil and increase crop production, okay? This practice is conventional throughout the agricultural region of the United States of California. In the flush of the land after this is applied to the soil, is there possible contaminations that wash downstream or in the first-flush runoffs or anything like that?
Well, based upon the evidence that was presented by the farmers and the actual individuals who applied the so-called biosolid slant sludge, they had to do so because of the plant uptake of those minerals and many of those were organic components which were dissolved by soil chemistry. The idea is that when you amend the soils to a certain degree, and they explained this during the workshop, that the plant uptake was fairly quick. You get a high yield for applying the solids, which are basically nutrients for the plants. In the first flush, you're not going to get that much. And this has already been demonstrated by numerous reports, and as you know, biosolids and sludge is one of the most intensely studied topics in the industry as far as application of biosludge and solids. I had references from the industrial waste people, I've had inputs from farmers. I grew up in a rural environment, as some of you know, and we routinely used biosolids. And so, I mean, it's just a matter of producing crops. You had to amend the soils in this environment here where we've got a lot of sandy, loamy clays and just sandy soils. You have to amend the soils every year if you want to get a decent crop. And this is something that has been practiced for several years, well, I should say for about fifty years or so. And then Orange County and these other municipalities started dumping their biosolids here, but the intent and the techniques for using those biosolids remain the same, and the people who did that realized the profit. But as far as runoff of heavy metals, heavy metals tend to stay pretty much neutral. There was an allegation about arsenic and a geologist's report, and it's also reflected in the EIR, that arsenic is just a permanent residence of this whole region. And so you're going to see that in the water regardless.
I just want to, go ahead.
I just want to agree with you. I listened to your writings and read them, and I agree with what you say, and I wish it wasn't in the general plan, the references also.
Well, we'll get to that one another day. It sounds like we need to add that to the list, but I just want to say because the, the one of the speakers earlier this evening questioned your qualifications and certifications and has done so numerous times, you know, clearly, Bachelor of Science in Chemistry, Professional Certifications in Environmental Land Use and Planning, Hazardous Materials Management, Environmental Site Assessment and Mitigation, Environmental Analysis, Environmental Project Management, Environmental Risk and Communications, a former Civil Engineer Corps with the United States Navy and with two CB Battalion tours under my belt, I understand what you go through, I understand you're a highly qualified professional, and even more so to the, the thing that, that gets it for me, you're a, you're a state-registered environmental health specialist with your license number and a stamp and it, and good and it doesn't expire till 2015. So your qualifications, experience, and certifications are well documented, so I just want to thank you for providing that letter.
And thank you, sir.
All right. Are the, any other speakers?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Phillips.
Thank you.
Rick Kroy.
Been a long time coming. I just wanted to speak on a couple of things. Congratulations, there's some wonderful language. You know, my subject du jour is preserving rural community. There's some wonderful language in the general plan which relates to creating policies that correct wrongs when it happens and preserving rural communities as they are. I also want to speak about the Wang property. You have two planning commissions, the Board of Supervisors, the GPAC Committee, all agree that medium-density on that property is not an adequate use of land or an appropriate use of that land. The planning commission slugged it out many, 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 many hours. I was here for that marathon. A good compromise was reached. I don't want to say I speak for everybody in my neighborhood, the Bell Mountain ranches, everybody's thrilled with a one-acre designation. It preserves the goalposts which was set, which is rural residential. It protects our identity, that's exactly what the general plan says, protecting rural communities and improving them. A, a quality project brought into that property would improve everybody's life over there. A quality project would improve our property values. It would preserve what we all bought there for, for larger lots, a, a more relaxed lifestyle as far as intensity, and that we, we think that the planning commission did a lot of great work and they did a lot of good work and, and we support that decision. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kroy. Next speaker, please.
Randy Williams.
There was a change in political power a year ago, and tonight is a defining moment. While the general plan reflects sound planning or the financial and political interest of others, such objectives do not have to contradict each other, but many times do, because when a property owner squeezes an extra unit on their lot, the value may rise, while a city that shows no restraint usually declines. A land-use plan versus a political one. Take the Wang property. Supervisor Vannell changed it from rural to tract. Supervisor Stone later rejected it. The founding Menifee Planning Commission recommended rural, and the council later adopted tract. Whatever side was taken, one would admit, planning was not the issue, it was politics. And that political divide was a factor in the election that brought change and this council together. The city's visions and values state, quote, "We value the ability to accommodate equestrian uses," unquote. The Bell Mountain area is one of the few places left for equestrians, and the Wang property is surrounded on three sides by two-acre minimum lots, the fourth a five-acre minimum lot, and Bell Mountain, which is a natural buffer for urban uses. Consistent and compatible land use among contiguous parcels is good planning. In addition, cities such as Menifee that lack manufacturers and knowledge-based industries can attract such economic drivers through lower density. I refer to it as economic drivers before density. Cities that do not manage density before the business community grows usually have lower socioeconomic results that can never be reversed. I work in the development field, and when my colleagues advocate maximizing units for gain while living in communities less dense, I do not think it engenders respect. Density based on business growth and quality development that supports high-performance communities serves everyone's interests. It's where developers invest the most. I recommend the Wang property be designated two-acre minimums for the most compatible use with its neighbors and best means for attracting community wealth. The neighborhood has shown good faith by endorsing one-acre minns, but they shouldn't have to compromise. That's the political solution. If that's how the council approaches land use decisions, it should change its vision and value statement in the general plan document to "Our vision is a political general plan" or "We value compromised land use decisions." It's more truthful than claiming the plan is based on principles and sound design. Now, I admire the integrity and principles of members on this council. May you adopt a general plan that reflects such attributes. It will serve the long-term interests of those you are elected to serve. Thank you.
Mr. Deputy?
Excuse me, Mr., is it Williams? You're in development, and so I'm, just in reference to the general plan, when we create, let us say, a potentially tract area in, in a rural area, from what I've seen in a number of cities, they'll go for, let us say, instead of one acre, maybe they'll go for two acres. Obviously, if somebody then wants to development, they can apply for a modification or an amendment, but at that point, the city, the city manager, the community, the director of community development, at least has some leverage as, say, potential infrastructure requirements, et cetera. And otherwise, if you don't do that, one of two things happen. Either you degrade the social-economic environment of that community, or you include that infrastructure and added amenities that you would want and pass it on to the general taxpayer rather than the developer. Is that, is that a fair comment?
Well, I think there's points in that that are fair. As I mentioned, there's always an incentive from a property owner to get as much density as it can. Your decision is decide what is good planning and the proper densities for any one area. But given that the incentive is always on the property owner to get as much density as he can for his own economic benefit, if the general plan really doesn't warrant, in this case, like the Wang property, a donut hole with incompatible contiguous parcels, then it's much better to stay with the general plan and allow the applicant at that point to apply for a general plan amendment saying, "I want to detour or change direction from your general plan," because it is general. At that point, you're put in a position as, as a sitting elected body to determine, well, is this worth changing the nature of this area or this community? And if the developer has a plausible argument, it puts the city in a position to, shall we say, have some leverage to say, in return for whatever you applied for, we would like some concessions that would benefit the community. In this case, when you're doing it at the general plan level and putting higher density in a place that doesn't fit, for just the sake of somebody coming up and saying, "Please," you have basically taken away all your bargaining chips to actually negotiate a better deal for the community in the future when they apply for an amendment to justify changing the general plan.
Thank you. That's very revealing.
You spoke, spoken like you've been a community development director, an economic development director in a municipality at one point in your career. Thank you, Mr. Williams. Next speaker, please.
John Samelin.
Good evening.
My name is John Samelin. I reside in San Diego County. My wife and I are the owners of that parcel of real estate in that, in the city of Menifee, commonly identified by Riverside County as its parcel number 372-090-001. Our parcel of real estate has been included in the proposed open space conservation zone in the Bell Mountain area of the Menifee Proposed General Plan. We're asking that you not rezone our property to open space conservation. We're asking that you rezone it residential, R5 or R4, as it was when we bought, when we bought it. As a young man, I joined the United States Navy from the Philippines, and because of my service, was able to become a U.S. citizen. We immigrated to this wonderful country to live the American dream. As a part of that dream, we purchased our property in Menifee over ten years ago. It is twenty-two point five acres. The west boundary is the east slope of a part of the ridgeline from Bell Mountain, north to the hill owned by the Hidden Meadows Owners Association, which is the north boundary. The east boundary is the Wang property. Earlier this year, we almost had our American dream come true. When we had a buyer for our property, the dream did not come true because when we and the buyer discovered the proposed open space conservation zone, the buyer walked away. The topography of our property is similar to the Menifee Heights property, with slope on the east and lowland in the middle and west. We're asking you to please give us the same opportunity you gave the Menifee Heights developer by zoning our property back to residential and allowing us the opportunity to present a map for future development. Thank you so much for your time and consideration.
Thank you. Councilmember August?
Excuse me, sir. What's your last name?
Last name is Samelin.
Samelin.
Sir, yes.
How many acres is your parcel?
Twenty-two point five acres.
How much?
Twenty-two.
Twenty-two, and you said that...
Twenty-two point five.
Do you have your property up for sale because you said somebody that, a prospective buyer, walked away when you tried to sell it?
Yes, yes, sir, early, earlier this year, yeah.
And how long ago was that?
That was like March.
On March, in March.
March or April.
And can you just explain to me a little more what the react, how, if he knew, I think it was probably, how did he find out about the open space designation?
No, we were coming here and found out that it was, you know, you were trying to zone it for open space.
You owned the property, somebody came out to buy it and realized it was open space and walked away, or you walked away?
No, I was the one, both of us, you know, were, were trying to...
Okay, so you walked away?
The buyer.
Buyer walked away, okay, all right. Hmm, and did he give you any reason why? And did he give you any reason why?
Because it's, uh, it's, it's getting zoned for, uh, open space.
Did he think he wasn't going to be able to do anything with the property, or what was his, what, what, what do you think his reasons were for walking away?
That's correct, sir. He cannot do anything with the property.
Knew anything with the property?
Yes, sir.
Do you think that also?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so you would, so you would like to see the open space designation removed from the property and go back to, you know, R, R5, or whatever it is?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Well, I can tell you something. There's, there's some people that I've been talking to, and maybe even some people on the council that are taking that request fairly seriously, so I'm not, I don't know how it's going to turn out, but I happen to be one of them that I, I can understand and empathize with you about that designation, so that's all I have to say.
Thank you so much, council.
Deputy Mayor Edgerton.
Um, yes, sir. That, um, you have an acreage, I'm familiar on Bell Mountain on both the, the south, going up the other side and down the other side of the mountain, there's, there's at least ten parcels there of five acres. Are you one of those five-acre parcels, or potentially?
No, no, sir. It's 22.5 acres that I own.
Yeah. So you're looking at R, R5 Rural Residential, which is, um, one unit for five acres, correct?
Uh, I think so.
Right. Um, well, it's a general planning issue. I, it, it really goes beyond the third district. It really goes fundamentally to Declaration of Independence, life, liberty, pursuit of happiness, which was life, liberty, property. Um, and I think most of us, I am, most Americans, I think we are environmentalists. We love open space. We hope our government, when it has property, will make it open space. I think what becomes very repugnant to a lot of us is for the government to not make their property open space, but to go out to private citizens and to say, "Your property will be open space," um, and then become Orwellian and say, "But we're not taking, uh, you, we're not taking your property away from you." They're not taking the property away from you because they leave you with the title, but the inability to use it. Um, and so I think that kind of thinking goes way beyond this city, this kind of nationwide feeling in our country. Uh, some years ago, we would have called that un-American to go in and take somebody's property and not let them use it anymore. I'm going to make a motion, uh, not a motion, but a suggestion later on, that there is a, see if we can get a consensus on this council, uh, to send to staff a, um, request to come back with an ordinance for a, uh, development plan for that, for, um, mountain areas. Um, and we talked about that, Charles. Is, can you clarify that just a little bit for me? Is that something that you would see as an appropriate recommendation from staff or from council?
Appropriate is, is up to the council.
Right.
Um, what you've referred to and what both the planning commission and staff has discussed before is that there is going to be a need in the community to have an hillside development district or hillside development ordinance. And staff is in, has already initiated the process, uh, same as it's initiated processes for other, uh, development ordinances that you will need to, uh, support this general plan. And, uh, the suggestion had been made that, that if the council gave a consensus vote tonight, it would help staff get on that quicker than if it waited a month from now if you adopt the general plan at that point in time. Whether you initiate it tonight, whether you initiate it then, staff has already started the process, and we would do it in a normal sequence of things, um, if you don't give us other guidance.
Well, otherwise, um, I would want to send a message, and I'll see how my colleagues think. I, I got a feeling it's probably almost unanimous, but we'll see, uh, that when a governmental entity, whether it's a city, the county, the state, or the national government, goes into private property and says, "Your private property," uh, like, for example, we go into Wendy's property, and we'd say, "Wendy, your property is now open space." I don't think you'd like that. Uh, I, and then if I turned around and said to you, "But we're not taking your property," uh, I think that would even get you more angry, because it's true, we're not taking it because we're not taking your title. We're leaving you with property which is fundamentally useless. So, uh, the other way to do it, and I'm not opposed to making this property open space, but if we're going to make it open space because it benefits all the citizens of our community, then let's, as we say, belly up to the bar and pay the man for his property and then make it open space. If we're not willing to pay the man for his property as property that could be developed, then, uh, then let's let him develop his own property. So whenever the mayor, um, tells me that it's appropriate, I'm going to request from the council to see if we have that consensus of the council to have the, um, staff begin working on a, um, ordinance regarding what you just said. But I want to strongly send a message to the gentleman at the mic that it may be that we will end up, just for procedural purposes, accepting it as open space, but if I get that consensus agreement, it's a strong signal that we're not going to leave it that way. It'll probably take them maybe four to five weeks, because to do that, they'll probably have to go through the process of another public hearing, they'll have to probably go back to the planning commission, then come back to the council. But you will end up with, let us say, what you were asking for, R, R5. In other words, you'll be able to build your home, build a home on your property.
Thank you, sir.
Is there any, before I take other speakers, is there any opposition from the council right now to give that direction to staff to expedite a hilltop ordinance? Any objection whatsoever? Is that enough staff direction?
Certainly.
That's, that's unanimous consensus?
Certainly. However, I want to make it clear, it's not four or five weeks. It's months.
It's four or five months. Yeah, I understand. Yeah. Okay.
Thank you, sir.
Councilmembers before, Mr. Johnson, I'm going to call upon you first, please.
Thank you, sir, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Just so that we're all absolutely clear and on the same page, uh, the open space designation would have, uh, under that classification, a development code regarding the hillside development. So there would be development in the open space conservation area, and that's what we're, we're, we are seeking input from you to work on. Am I correct?
Correct.
Thank you.
Understood. Mr. August.
I want to, um, ask Wendy or the staff, or anyone who wants to answer this question. How does one know, if somebody wanted to come out here and purchase a piece of open space or rural, rural property, when's the first time they find out that that's been designated, um, uh, open space? I mean, is it on the APN number, is it signed, is it on the title? How, when do people first see that?
It's the responsibility of anyone purchasing property to do their due diligence in investigating what their property, um, is designated as. Most people will either call the city or come down to the city and look at what zoning maps there are in order to tell what property, what uses are allowed on that property. Or they approach it from a different angle, and they say, "What I'm looking for is a commercial property, an industrial property, a residential property, and where are those located in the city?" And we show them the maps that illustrate where those kind of properties are located.
So really, the only thing they have to identify, you're saying that's green blob on that map? I mean, it's not, it, you don't have geographical coordinates for each open space area, right?
You have assessor's parcel numbers that illustrate, you will have a map that illustrates parcel by parcel the zoning of property.
So the parcel, and the parcel number, it will say open space next to the parcel number?
With, I, depends what you mean by that. In this system...
Where, where, where does the person find out it's open space?
Land use map. The general plan.
So it's a map?
And typically on the APN, if you're looking it up at the county, the APN has a description of the APN and what the underlying zoning is, and it'll show you there.
Open space.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Or commercial, or R1, or...
I see, oh, I see. Okay. All right. Thank you. Councilmember Denver?
Um, something was just said that, well, I understand the spirit of the, um, overlay to give some ability to be able to build an open space. I think that's great. I, I support it. But something was said that kind of concerns me. If it's zoned now A5, uh, R5, uh, which means one unit, as I understand it, per five acres, this, this, um, open development, uh, building plan that we have, that doesn't necessarily put it back to that, does it? Doesn't it, I understand it as it has to do with, uh, being able to build on backsides of things and play, and you can't use roads that go up that dis, uh, make the hill look bad or cut off the top. There's a whole bunch of things. You may end up with just one acre, I mean, one lot, one lot on a particular hill, or two houses on a particular hill, but you don't necessarily go back to your original zoning, or am I incorrect?
When you create the hillside development standards, that will establish how much grading you can do, how much lot area beyond the footprint of the house that you can do. Um, it'll give you certain percentages, typically, it would give you certain percentages of slope that you could not exceed on the property, and it'll give you a minimum lot size. So if you have a property that's 22.5 acres in size, that standard may say you can't have a lot less than five acres in size. So you, we need to get away from the concept of R, R5 being one house per five acres. It's a minimum lot size of five acres. If your property, uh, when you ask to subdivide a property, if there isn't developable portion of that property, then that would be grounds to deny the subdivision of that. So we would look at that hillside standard, we will look at the property being divided and say, "Yes, you could," or "No, you couldn't," go down to the size of lots that are proposed. To answer your question more directly, if those standards are put in place and you cannot, for some reason, meet those standards, then because of the physical topography of that property, you would have a grounds to ask for a variance from those standards to allow at least a minimum development of the property. So there, it would always be a mechanism for the city to at least consider allowing the development to take place on the property.
Did I hear you say that if I had a property with one zone and we made it open space and we found that it was pretty steep, I could end up with either one or no houses on my property, even though it was zoned for four homes before? Am I not clear? Is the sides of the hills, since, since our open space designation means that you can't misuse the, it has to look a certain way from a distance?
Correct. For example, prohibition of...
You're losing some of your zone when we do this to them. They're not going to be able to build as they wish on these properties. We're going to tell them where they're going to build, we're going to tell them how many they're going to build. It may be exactly what the zoning is before we do this, but it may be less.
You are correct. All zones have that same effect, because all zones have standards that tell you how big, how much of the lot you can cover, what your setbacks have to be, what your, um, you have to have garages, for example, and so forth. So every single zone, commercial, industrial, residential, gives you a series of standards that you must comply with in order to develop that property. If you do not comply with those standards, then you're not allowed to build. If you have a hillside property, if you have an open space property, and then you have a supporting hillside ordinance that allows for the development of that property, then you would be restricted by the standards that are adopted by the council in adopting that ordinance. There would be, I'm assuming, a desire to limit the effect of the development of the property on the community as a whole, for example, by limiting, not allowing the development of property to be on the ridge line, to minimize the amount of grading to allow for a driveway to such a house, minimizing the amount of grading beyond the physical pad for the house itself and/or, uh, supporting structures. So in all zones, you have standards that are decided upon by the local jurisdiction, the council, uh, that they feel are best for the community.
That's very clear. Thank you.
Mr. August.
Just real quickly, what does OSC stand for?
Open Space Conservation.
Open Space Conservation. Um, so that's, so is it possible that if we come up with a hillside ordinance or some type of governing document allowing people to build wherever, according to whatever we decide, that you could put OSCB there, some designation that shows that it's buildable? So people just don't look at open space and say, "I'm, I'm going to run away from the property and go look somewhere else." Can it, can we put an identifier there?
No. I think we're talking apples and oranges at this point, because what I heard you say is, we, we, assuming that we, uh, keep this open space, a mechanism has been provided to allow these fourteen property owners of a cumulative one hundred acres that own these, uh, the Bell Mountain top essentially, provide them a mechanism to develop it to some point in the future, once this ordinance is developed. It seems to me that we satisfy our land use, um, designations with the state, and we also find a way to mitigate a perceived, what I consider to be a perceived economic loss by the, uh, landholders, because land, just like Mr. Wamboldt and his property, or whether an individual owner has 22 acres, land speculation is always, has an inherent risk, just like buying a piece of stock has a inherent risk, buying undeveloped land in a, in an area where you don't live, that's, that's an inherent risk, and people have to understand that. And there's, you know, there's that term caveat emptor in, uh, contract law that says, "Buyer beware." So it seems to me that we have, we have a way here to, uh, have our cake and eat it too, in a way. Am I right?
I would agree with your statement.
Okay. Mr. August.
I, I just, I know it's getting late, and, but I, I wouldn't necessarily agree with the statement that you just made. I agree that people who buy land, I bought, I bought, um, forty acres up in Anse about fifteen years ago. I didn't make a dime on it. I lost it. Now, they could have brought the kangaroo rat or some other thing, and it probably would have devalued the property, but, but to anticipate that the government's going to come in and all of a sudden designate open space for people to look at, I, I, I do not, I, I don't think they anticipate or have the right or should expect the government to come in and lay that kind of a designation on a property. So I would disagree with you, even though I know kangarats, kangaroo rats and all these other, uh...
Burling owl.
Burling owls and things like that come in, but for, to, to, for someone to look at the property base, I'm using an example, the government's going to come in and do that and say, "Can't build." Well, I don't know if that's a good, the example. I don't agree with you on that.
Well, what's, okay, well, I'm going to, I'm going to, what's the difference between the, the Wong or the Wang family who owns that property across from the Bell Ranches? It's land speculation at its finest. You have a developer who came in and bought land, who I've met with three times, who disclosed to me, "Hey, Mayor, my land basis in that land is so low, I'll hold on to it for another fifteen to eighteen years. I'll wait you guys out, and I'll file a general plan amendment when your, when your current council is long gone." There's no difference between that scenario and the same one that we're talking about here, because in that case, he presented a, he had, he owns land. He presented a, uh, general plan amendment to the, the planning commission at the county twice, and ultimately, the Board of Supervisors. All three of those bodies voted it down for inconsistent land use. So to say that government action doesn't affect property values, I would agree with you to a point, but, uh, that's, that's the inherent risk in land speculation, just like your property that you bought out in the desert. Did you buy it with the, uh, thought that you were going to make a pretty penny off of it?
I was going to make a whole lot.
Well, there you go, and you, and you didn't, and you lost, just like I lost $38,000 in 2007 in the stock market when it, when it crashed. So, all right, that's enough of that. Enough economics.
But, but, Mr. Mayor, but that, that wasn't because of any open space designation, so...
Well, that we're talking, good thing.
Speculation still.
Still speculation, that's my point. Mr. Edgerton.
Yeah, just quickly to make clarification, we're not, we're talking about the Bell Mountain area that doesn't include the Wang property, um, going up two sides of the mountain. There, there are properties that are above five acres. There's ten properties that only have five acres on each side of that hill. And the, um, consensus that the council reached, uh, sending it to staff to create a, a hillside ordinance, uh, means to send the message to those property owners that even if we pass, you know, a, a, a open space, we don't intend to leave it in condition where you cannot build on that property, so that one should be able to build a unit for every five acres. Um, that happens to be my district, that, that is my intent, and I'm not aware of any council member up here that would want to take away your right. I'm not aware of any council member up here that would want to take away, you're right, to at least build a home on, on five acres. And, and you should go away from here feeling comfortable that that, that's the direction we're heading.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor, for summarizing that. Next speaker, please.
Michael Jimmink.
And while the speaker's coming, how many more speakers do we have for this evening?
Six more following that on this item.
Okay. So, I just want those speakers, when, when we hit 10 o'clock, I am suspending public testimony, I'm continuing this hearing to 4 December, so that those speakers who aren't, who won't speak tonight, we will have first opportunity to speak on December 4th.
Yes, sir, and the way this would work is, if they did speak tonight, they would not be speaking again on this issue.
Understood, because the hearing's still open. All right, Mr. August, before, yes?
Can I, can I ask you to rethink that, Mr. Mayor, these people have been here all night. Six more speakers isn't going to take that long. Would you reconsider that, or ask the council how they feel about that?
Yeah, ask the council. Do you want, do you want to go ahead and hear all six remaining speakers tonight? What's the consensus of the council?
Only 20 minutes.
We have other things to do.
You do have a balance of the agenda.
Kerry, get it over.
Let's go one, one at a time. Yes, Mr. Edgerton?
And under federal law, if you keep going, at a certain point, you must give, by mandate, a bathroom break.
I think it was discussed already.
Please proceed, sir.
Thank you. Good evening, gentlemen. I'm Michael Jimmink. My wife and I own one of the five acre parcels in the Bell Mountain area that has been designated in your proposed map as open space conservation. We've submitted our objections in writing, but I want to point out a couple of things this evening. Number one, as a practical matter, in the reality on the ground, if you designate that property as open space conservation, you're removing it from the real estate market. No real estate buyer, no real estate investor's going to walk up, look at that zoning and say, I'm interested in that piece of property. If you go out in the market today and look for comparable sales for real, for open space conservation zoning, you don't find them. You don't find them because they don't sell. Now, you're not required under the law to include this zoning in this map. If you're not required to do it, why do it? What's been proposed are two reasons. One is retain the rural composition of the community. If you go over there and look at that map, and take a look at my piece of property, immediately north of my piece of property is the Lexington Development. Immediately northwest and east, and west, and west of that is Hidden Hills. To the east is the recently approved map for Menifee Heights. So if you take that horseshoe right there, and all the properties that are there and will be finished, it's about 800 homes. Then you have the Wang property right below it. I don't know what's going to happen there, but there's going to be more houses there. So that's not rural. There's a lot of tract houses, that's what's in that area right now. The other thing is to preserve the scenic resources. Well, the reality is this, if you go over there and look at that map, if I can approach the map, I can point it out to you. Is that okay?
This is the zone right here. There's a ridge line from here up to here.
Hold on, Mr. Jimmink. You aren't on the microphone nor the record until we give you a microphone.
Am I back? Thank you. Okay. If you take a look at this ridge line right here, this is Bell Mountain. Now, Bell Mountain is, is privately owned property, but from Bell Mountain up to the Hidden Hills Mountain right there, all of this side, the ridge line and all of this side is already open space designated. That was done when the developers developed all of the houses on this side. So it's already open space. You don't need to add it. If you go to this hilltop right here, that hilltop is behind Hidden Meadows. It's 20 acres, it's already open space designated. That was done when the developer developed it. If you go over here to this ridge line, that's Menifee Heights. That's already designated as open space. That was done when the developer got the map approved. The ridge line, the slope, and the inside of the slope as well. So the only thing that's not, the only thing that's not open space already, other than Bell Mountain, are the properties in here. You can't see those properties from the north, you can't see them from the west, and you can't see them from the east.
Mr. Jimmink, that is your time.
Can you wrap up, please, and slap up in 20 seconds?
The only place you can see them from is down here on the Wang property, and as soon as they put one house on that Wang property, you can't see them anymore either, because they're not that high. This is the low part. All of the ridges, all of the hilltops are already open space designated. You don't need to worry about an ordinance, you don't need to worry about open space. It's all been done. That's what I have. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, real quick.
Yes, Mr. August?
Mr. Jenny?
Yes, sir.
Did you say, at the, did you say at the beginning that the city is not required to designate by the law, designate the, those parcels open space?
That is correct. There's absolutely nothing in the law that says you must include open space conservation in your map.
In your map. Okay. And you have, you have a-
That's contrary to what staff testified to earlier, I'm sorry. That's contrary.
I don't believe that is what staff testified to.
I believe they, I believe they testified that there's government code that requires an open space and a conservation element in the general plan.
Well, you, you get a little bit iffy in here, and here's the reason why. There, when you have developments, you have to have open space in the way of parks. So when you develop, you do have to have open space. But when you put together a general plan, you have no requirement to go out there, take some ground, and say, okay, this is open space, conservation. It is not required under the law. Now, it's been, I was admitted to the bar in 1976. I practiced law until 1992. In that time, I did land use law. I did litigation, I did appellate work. And my understanding of the law is, that's not required. After 1992, I was appointed to the bench, so I was a judge. I didn't do land use law. I don't think it's changed. I've done my research since, and I've not seen where you are required to have open space conservation in that map.
City Attorney?
First of all, let me, let me thank Mr. Jimmink?
Jimmink.
Jimmink, for the, for the commentary. In fact, there's no requirement that there be an open space conservation zone or classification. There is a requirement, however, that there be an open space element in the general plan. And that open space element has to address the state values and priorities that are set forth in the government code. I happened to pull it up for you. And this is government code, section 65560, and I, I think it's 50, 61, I'm sorry. The legislature finds and declares as follows, "The preservation of open space land is defined in this article as necessary, not only for the maintenance of the economy of the state, but also for the assurance of the continued availability of land, for the production of food and fiber, for the enjoyment of scenic beauty, for recreation, and for use of natural resources." That is the policy of the state. How you implement that policy is what you're, you're arguing about in terms of your, your land use element. So, you're right, there's no requirement that there be a specific zone, but you must deal with this goal and this policy in a way that, that is consistent with it.
Mr. Edgerton?
Well, Your Honor, it's-
I'm retired, so it's-
It's moot point, anyway, because it's very clear, we intend to come back and see that you can develop that, in which case, it would become, let us say, RR5, not open space.
Thank you. Next speaker, please?
Ruth Goulet.
I know what she's talking about.
Good evening, people. It's getting late. Excuse me. I have a question, and it has nothing to do with what I intended to speak on. I think that planting of the oak tree is awesome. What kind of an oak tree is it?
Oak.
Is it a California live oak, or is it a deciduous oak?
Yeah. That's a good question. Don't know. Can we find out?
It's green.
Can we find out?
Is it green all year? Oh, well.
Of course, of course, we can find out. I believe it is green all year.
I ask stupid questions, I know. I, I think that should matter. It's a great oak, it said. What's that? I'm from Sun City, as you well know, another one of the cockroaches. And I'm, again, I heard about this Rhina element that suddenly is going to be transposed from the club, which doesn't want it, down into the basic area of Sun City, where we can always dump. I believe she even mentioned it. All of the Rhina things are put in areas, for example, if I may misquote, perhaps, I apologize, near transportation, near shopping centers. Certainly, we've put a lot of it down around the university, and of course, in Sun City. What's that supposed to mean? Again, dumping? Let's see, you gave us the internet cafe, the tattoo parlor, you gave us this wonderful low-income housing on the other side of the freeway. This is another thank you from you guys? Mr. Womble has a property. You guys got a problem, because he bought from the county, and now you've got to live with what that is. But, we don't have to live with Rhina, your Rhina projects, just because those numbers didn't fit up there for a very low income, because Mr. Denver and his club doesn't want it up there, so dump it in Hollywood? I mean, excuse me, dump it down in Sun City? I don't think so. Let's, find someplace where you can put your very low density. That's not going to, that piece of property is going to, you put any kind of housing there, a small, um, commercial possible, but you put any housing there, you're going to impact traffic-wise. That, Bradley is bad enough, we can't even use Newport anymore. It's going to be nutty.
Ruth, that's your time.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to go ahead and take the speakers.
Gordon Yud.
Gordon Yud, Stonegate Development, 26071, Merit Circle, Laguna Hills, California. I represent the ownership of the property, the now infamous property north of the club, and 14.81 acres, originally designated on the general plan as 14 to 20 units per acre, which seemed appropriate considering the freeway, the power lines, all of the commercial in forthcoming, as well as the employment land surrounding it. It was then designated at 20 to 24 for Rena purposes. And by the way, I did have a discussion with Dr. Cave, who said that we did have to build the 20.1, and we did do some site planning, and it forced us to three-story units, which we really didn't want to do. So we really aren't, we're not that unhappy to have the 20 to 24 go away from that property. I fully understand the club's concerns, because they did the math and realized that the 20 to 24 would, in fact, generate three-story units. So I understand their, their concerns. At the planning commission meeting, representatives of the club, Mr. McMurray, indicated that they were satisfied with 8 to 14. I'm satisfied with 8 to 14. If I, Mr. Leclerc, if I interpret your staff, current staff report correctly, I believe you're now recommending 8 to 14. Do I read it correctly?
5 to 8, 5 to 8.
Yes. At the top of page two, second sentence, that's the planning commission's recommendation.
You know what the plant, right. Well, we would, I would say, we are satisfied with the 8 to 14. We think that within the land use category that gives us the ability to use a variety of housing types, that we will be able to create a housing plan that will properly treat the edge conditions with the club, that will satisfy them, and be able to create a very creative plan within that land use designation. So, I would appreciate the 8 to 14 category. Thank you very much.
And I need to clarify, on the commission's resolution that's presented to you on page three, says designate that property north of the club to a designation of residential 5.1 to 8 dwelling units to acre. That's under tab number one, page three, under section four.
So the staff report's inconsistent with the, the resolution that was passed by the commission?
Yes, there's an inconsistency between the commission's resolution and that staff report.
Okay. Just wanted to make sure that, because I, I mean, I'm okay with it, I just wanted to make sure that it was indeed a, an administrative error. Mr. August?
14, does the, let's see, the 14, you said 14, you'd be happy with 14.1 to what?
No, we would be, we would be satisfied with the 8 to, I'm sorry, let me get my brain to work here, with the 8 to 14 category. It's currently, it's currently shown as originally 14 to 20, and then 20 to 24. We'd be okay two notches down.
8 to 14, does that, would that result in two stories, one story, or what?
Predominantly two-story.
Two-story.
Two-story, and, and it gives us the ability to cluster. We, we need to move away from the freeway, we need to deal with the edge condition at the club, we need to figure out how to face away from the 220 volt power lines as well.
5.1 to 8, that's a single strike?
Uh, no. It would also be two-story, but it would most likely result in a grid pattern development, not quite as creative as, as if we had the flexibility to use other product types that are provided for in, in the, the 8 to 14 category. If you look at the definitions under land use exhibit three, under the, under the 8 to 14 category, you have a much wider range of product types that you can address in that category.
Mr. Edgerton?
I'm just trying to get clarification. The gentleman brought up parcel one, parcel two, parcel's wrong description. And the club area was, I thought, we have two different developers here now. I'm trying to get clarification. You're talking about 8 14 units around the club?
Up north of the club. I wasn't at the meeting when they decided that the, that this should be the swap property. So, but it's okay with me if you take the 20 to 24 away.
Okay. I, I must say, I was impressed with the last lady. She called herself a cockroach or something. I think her main name was Ms. Goulet. And, and a swap sounded to me like, we don't like it here at the club, so we'll dump it somewhere else. And of course, my first reaction is to why, why have it either place, but I, I'm interested in the fact that you can go to lower density. Hearing that from a developer, to me, is music. Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Yud. For staff, I, I'm similar to an earlier recommendation or request from Mr. Edgerton regarding the hilltop ordinance and development of it. I would like to get consensus from the council to ask staff to provide us, to seek of maybe a couple, one or two more alternatives for a swap. Recommend, you know, we're going to take the recommendation of the planning commission, certainly under advisement, but it sounds to me like we may need, we may need an alternative here for December 4th to consider. If that, if I can get a consensus of the, of the council to ask staff to explore that? Did we already find one?
Yes.
Thank you. Do we need to discuss it? Can we discuss it on the fourth?
I suggest you discuss it on the fourth, because you'll need to, to think about this.
Yes.
And we need to get away from the term swap, because the property north of the club was considered on its own merit as to whether, what designation would be appropriate. The property next to Salt Creek was considered on its own merit as to what would be appropriate. It was an unfortunate word that popped up in all of this discussion. You're not saying we're taking this from here and putting it down there. You're considering this property as in reference to a need to meet the requirements of the state through the housing element, and you're considering that property. So we need to get away from the concept of swap. We will provide to you this, and if we can, some other properties for you to consider, those properties on their own merit to meet the housing element needs.
Thank you, Mr. Leclerc. That's exactly, thank you for that clarification. Mr. August? Mr. August?
Yeah, Charles, that was exactly how it was explained at the planning commission meeting. It was a trade-out. It was a swap. Now, maybe you want to call it something else now, but that's how it was presented by the commissioners at the planning commission meeting. Trade one, send it from there down to there. So let's, I just wanted to be clear on that.
Okay. Thank you for the clarification, Mr. August. Next speaker, please.
Michelle Failey.
You would have been angry with me had you not spoken tonight, huh?
No, Mayor, I would have been fine coming back on this number four, but, but I'm here, so.
Good evening.
Good evening, good evening, Mayor, and members of the city council, thank you for my time this evening. My name is Michelle Failey, and I am deputy general counsel for the Pachanga tribe in Temecula. As you know, not only is the city home to our ancestral villages and priceless cultural resources, but we are also a landowner here in the city, and we hold reservation lands less than five miles from the city center. We are a sovereign government, neighbor, and immediate stakeholder in your jurisdiction. I come before you tonight to make a record of the tribe's concerns, but we are hopeful that these issues will be resolved before the next city council meeting on this project. The tribe is concerned that the city has failed to conform to the mandates of state law, namely SB 18. The city has failed to consult with the Pachanga tribe under SB 18 in a meaningful and timely manner. The law itself contains a definition of consultation, which means the meaningful and timely process of seeking, discussing, and considering carefully the views of others in a manner that is cognizant of all parties' cultural values and where feasible, seeking an agreement. We were provided an SB 18 notice by the city on October 22nd, 2010, and we responded timely within our 90-day timeframe on January 7th, 2011, requesting consultation with the city. If we fast forward to March 2012, we have email communications from staff here at the city that no progress had been made on the general plan, and that perhaps we could start to discuss the conservation element of the plan, but that there were no documents for us to review. At this point, there's nothing for us to talk about during consultation, since no general plan documents were prepared. And we didn't receive the notice of preparation for the EIR until July of 2012, some months later. We submitted our comments timely in August of 2012, noting the city's failure to consult with us under SB 18, and our DEIR comments were submitted timely in October of this year, 2013, where we again informed the city that they had not contracted the tribe to formally begin SB 18 consultations. We are now working with staff to consult with, under SB 18, and to hopefully address the concerns that we have with the general plan document. We look forward to working with city staff on this important and beneficial city document. Thank you.
Thank you very kindly. Next speaker?
Jim Gray.
Good evening.
Well, we've been over this ground several times before, but I'm going to go ahead and read this, and perhaps a little of the history might pop out of it. My name is Jim Gray. My wife, Joni, and I are 17-year residents of the club in Sun City. This is a senior community with 258 single-story homes and 412 residents. I first got involved with a property just north of our community when in April of 2007, I attended a Riverside County Planning Commission meeting. As a previous developer, Corman Lee, was planning on building one- and two-story homes just over the six-foot perimeter wall of our community. Supervisor Roth and Supervisor Jeff Stone were both quite concerned about the two-story homes looking down on the residents in that, on that side of the community. Their suggestion was that the single-story homes could be built along the wall, but the two-story homes units should be built in the middle and on the northern edge of the community. Now we have another developer who's talking about building possibly three-story apartment complexes. Now I'm confused. By the planning commission's recommendation to the council in section four of the general plan, designate that property north of the club to a designation of residential 5.1 to 8 DU slash AC. Then at the top of page two, which states, considering, consider adjusting the designation of the property north of the club to a residential density consisting with the club's designation 8.1 to 14.1 DU slash AC. So our understanding that the club's current designation is 5.1 to 8 AC. Thanks for your consideration. We first moved in, the club had a senior community slogan of 55 or better. After 17 years, the better has worn thin for a lot of us, but our seniors are still active and eager to serve. I want to thank you on their behalf.
Thank you, Mr. Gray.
You're welcome.
Next speaker, please.
There are no further speakers on this item.
Excellent. Well, are there any other questions from the council of staff this evening on this Hearing none, then I will continue this hearing until December 4th, 2013.
Can you get a vote on continuing the hearing, please?
May I have a, may I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Furman. Do you need a roll call vote or any objections? No objections.
Thank you, sir.
The hearing is continued to December 4th.
Can you hold on one second?
All right.
Good job.
Thank you, now is, thank you, ladies and gentlemen, for coming here and participating in this process, as it is your right to do. On to the next item of the agenda, which is discussion item 12.1, approved building and safety department staffing plan and adjustments to the budget. Mr. Johnson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. During my review with the city council, I was directed to come up with a plan to move our staff forward in anticipation of the return of the economy. At the last council meeting, I shared that I'd be returning with a building staff, staffing adjustment request, which is directly related to construction activity throughout the city. As of November 1st, some 280 homes were under construction, which does not account for the recent home construction starts in the Mosaic Track, which is reportedly about 68 more. As of mid-October, the building department had surpassed its revenue projection for the entire fiscal year, and has recently surpassed $1 million in revenue. Menifee's economy is being led by the construction industry, and it's returning to us. Colin McNeese, our building official and code enforcement director, has done a phenomenal job of acquiring former municipal employees and patching our inspection team together to keep these projects moving, but without full-time staff, work will fall behind. Not only that, our current employees deserve the credit for the massive amount of work that's being done by them. The current overtime for the building inspection staff is now running at the cost of another one and a half employees. Our money is better spent hiring full-time staff that can assist or relieve the burden and handle more work that's being done in the pipeline, that's coming in the pipeline. If you go back to the first slide, Julie, due to an upturn in the economy, you can see where we were last year, between building permits issued and building inspections, we had 182. In January of 2012, we had 376, more than double. And I think if you saw the activity to date, it would, it's quite astronomical. We're looking at 1,159 building inspections in that month alone. If you can go to the next slide. In order to effectively serve customers, I met with Colin McNeese, Terry Willoughby, we came up with a staffing plan to meet this increased activity level, which we don't believe is going to level off for at least about five years. Staff's recommending the following full-time positions be added. We're looking at two full-time building inspectors. By the way, we currently have one building inspector and a senior inspector. So two, two full-timers with three part-timers are then expending one and a half times a body in overtime to get these, to get this job done. We're also looking at increasing our permit tech abilities so that we're, we'd like to bring on another permit technician. Currently, building division's utilizing, obviously, temporary inspectors, as well as employee overtime to manage the workload. Approval of these positions would allow the building division to effectively manage the increased workload and create a more stable workforce. What we've really been doing, what Colin's really been doing, is taking out his, his package of Band-Aids and, and handing them to each one of these guys, because we can, we can use them for 960 hours. Most of the, these part-timers that we have on staff are former retired building inspectors that are coming back, and they can only give us a certain amount of hours per year, and they're, they're really burning that up, especially through the overtime that we're paying. The estimated cost for the fiscal year is $138,000. The increased building revenues will provide funding necessary to support the cost. Approval will reduce overtime costs for existing inspection staff, which have averaged 48 hours a month, or $2,750 per month for the fiscal year to date. Given the staff report this evening, Terry Willoughby had to leave today, she wasn't feeling well. If you have any questions of us or of Colin, we're happy to answer those questions, but the request is to allow us to go out and hire two full-time building inspectors and a building permit technician.
Mr. Edgerton?
I would move it.
Second.
Roll call, please. It's a budgetary issue, and we'll, I'm sorry, we have discussion on the dais, sorry, Mr. Furman.
I just had a few questions for clarification. That $138,000 is just for the remainder of the fiscal year up until July 1st.
That's correct. Absolutely correct.
Yeah, that's only in, actually, by the time they hired, that's, you're estimating, they'll, they'll probably be hired after the first of the year, so they'll.
We're hoping to get them on board right after the first of the year.
That's a six-months budget. And another item, is there a, an extension of time from the submission of a, a plan till it's issued, a permit till it's issued? Are, I mean, are, are customers complaining it's, it takes too long?
Yes and no. They, they sometimes complain that it takes too long, and then when I talk to Colin, who can, who will address the issue, what we're really doing is spending a lot of money in overtime and Saturday work. We've been, and Colin, if you want to jump in here, Colin's been setting up Saturday inspections for folks because we obviously don't have enough time during the week with the staff that we have to get to the inspections, so he's been setting up special inspections on weekends. Secondarily, we've been asked by two, two builders to hire, I guess, through a, through a separate contract, more staff.
Provide additional staffing for you.
The issue that we have with that, though, is that's overtime, that's deposit-based, that's fee-based, you don't have control of your employees.
It's just, I, I saw the permits to inspection, the previous year was only double. Are there more than one or two inspections on a permit now, or?
Typically, a home may take as many as 13, 14 inspections per home. That's only one permit. And with the residential activity going up, that's why you're seeing the number of inspections increase. So from start to finish, that's, that's about correct.
Okay, all right.
Mr. Manager, does this meet one of your stated objectives, to prepare the city and the staff for economic recovery?
This is, this is the first drop of the hat, so to speak. We'll be coming back after, in January, after our strategic objectives meeting and identify where some other positions are needed in the city.
All right, any other questions? We have a, we have a motion, a second. Roll call, please.
Councilmember August. Councilmember Furman.
Aye.
Councilmember Denver. Deputy Mayor Edgerton.
Aye.
Mayor Mann.
Aye.
Thank you.
City Clerk, would you please help me out with agenda item 12.2?
Yes, sir. We, oh, you mean, as in, what is it? This is an introduction of ordinance number 2013-135, adopting by reference, the 20, and setting a public hearing. For the 2013 additions of the California Building Code, the California Green Building Code, California Electrical Code, California Mechanical Code, California Plumbing Code, California Fire Code, and the 1997 additions of the Uniform Housing Code, Uniform Code for Abatement of Dangerous Buildings and Related Model Codes with appendices and amendments. Because this is being adopted by reference, tonight's first hearing normally is where you would take all your input, however, and you certainly can take input on it, but there is actually a public hearing that will be scheduled next time to adopt it because of the fact that it's adopted by reference.
Understood. Does council have any discussion on this matter? Mr. Furman?
I was quite concerned with this because, as I read through it, there was 34 changes that were made, and it's like there's, there's no reference to what it was and what was changed. I would, I would like to see this actually brought back with a, a red line copy of what it was and what it was changed to, and who actually requested the changes, okay? It's, I spent quite a few hours on it myself, trying to dissipate the 34 changes, and with, referring back to, you have to refer back to ordinance 105, and then read what it is and read what it's back. I was only able to cup, cover about three of the situations. And actually, since we are going to be tied up with the general plan for the next two meetings, I would like to see a red line copy and let the planning commission hash it out, my suggestion.
Mr. Johnson?
Thank you. Would it be helpful if Colin McNeese, our building official, gave a little bit more background on what we're attempting to do and why? And we would love to bring a red line copy of the, of the state codes, but you'll probably fill this room with, with the, with the amount of papers? So if we could have Colin maybe give a, give a brief presentation, you can ask him direct questions?
Well, there's 30, I've got 34 questions. You want to, you want to, do we want to set that long, or?
It's up to you.
You know, I'd, I'd rather.
Our staff's here to answer questions.
Just, there's, there's, there's not many here, and if you address each one of these with just a little explanation of what was changed, it would help me tremendously.
Could that be brought back at the public hearing?
Yes. Yeah, this is just the setting of the hearing, basically. It's introducing what's being proposed. The hearing will then be set for the next meeting. At that point, there can be a much more complete staff report and discussion.
It's kind of a backwards function at this one. We're adopting by reference, so we're stating that we're going to have a public hearing, and then we're going to have the public hearing.
This is all spelled out in the uniform code.
To me, you're, you're, you're putting 34 changes in here, and there's, there's a lot of, I don't know what it was, and there are a lot of the changes I'd like to speak on.
Those are, those are great questions. This is the uniform code, but, from the state. You understand? That everyone adopts.
We don't have leeway to change it.
Well, we can make it more stringent, but we.
We can make it more stringent, but we can't take away from the state law.
Yeah, but it was, it was prepared, prepared pretty much by Julie Biggs, and.
No, I'm sorry, this one was not. This was actually prepared by Colin in consultation with both Mr. Kwan and Mr. Rosenblatt. So this has been, and it is just a routine thing ordinarily.
Was there input on what other cities are doing on these situations, and?
I have to ask Mr. McNeese.
That's correct. With consultation with our attorneys, a lot of these changes from the building and safety side were administrative, and it's keeping up with what the practices of other cities are doing. Some of the administrative changes that we propose and the proposed ordinance, for example, one of them we changed, instead of for the, when the, the term building official in the grading section, it actually changes that to refer to our public works director, which is currently the practice that we're currently under, even though our code doesn't state it. So that's one of the changes that we've made. I've made a change to the section under the building code to allow easy permitting of agricultural structures under 1,000 square foot, so that it isn't cumbersome for some of the individuals that have small hay barns and things of that nature. We've included that provision in our code adoption to try to streamline the process for those individuals and not have them coming through an entire planning process. That's another one of the changes. The majority of changes in the building and safety are administrative, dealing with the term limits of building permits and things of that nature. We are proposing and adopting the 2013 California Fire Code as amended by Riverside County Fire Department. The majority of changes in there, we have a fire representative from Riverside County can explain some of those. The biggest change in that is reducing the square footage down to a 3,600-square-foot limitation, but the proposed ordinance is consistent with Riverside County's ordinance throughout the county, as well as all the contract cities that Riverside County Fire currently operate under. What the intent of that code adoption is to bring us all within a level playing field so that Riverside County Fire and administration of their fire enforcement, fire code enforcement is consistent in the city of Menifee, the same way they are throughout the county and in their contract cities. cities. So, if there's questions, we have a representative from County Fire that can answer those.
We have some.
We have two other codes that we're looking at adopting that we currently do not have on the books right now. One is the Uniform Housing Code, and the other one is the Uniform Code for Abatement of Dangerous Buildings. Both of those are tools or can be used in our code enforcement program that we currently do not have in our toolbox. So, abatement of dangerous buildings is very difficult under our current ordinance. We're proposing and adopting both of these codes by reference to allow us to be able to handle some of the dangerous conditions throughout the city, as well as some of the substandard conditions.
Are these dangerous building codes similar to other cities?
Yes. It's consistent with what's done in a majority of cities in Southern California.
Do you have references from other cities on what they do?
We can get those, if what cities currently have those. It's very typical for cities to adopt these codes by reference rather than creating their own, because these codes, some of them, as you can see, some of them have been in effect since 1997, and some of those are still in effect today and being utilized. So, that's what we were trying to do, is adopt these codes, give us additional enforcement activity to be able to handle that and give us the administrative review under those two codes. So, with that, I'd be more than happy to try to answer, you know, any question. We can bring a red line to show what changes we're proposing. But for the majority of this text in here, its majority is basically referencing the state codes. Keep in mind, these codes become effective January 1st, whether we like it or not. The state mandates that we adopt these codes or pick them up by default. So, January 1st, I, as the Building Official for the city of Menifee, will have to enforce all these codes anyway. What this does is adopt them by reference and allows us to make changes for administrative. We can change the code itself, which I haven't proposed changing any of the technical codes in the building side of it. The changes to the technical codes have been proposed on the fireside only.
All right. Now, you say you made input in...
Made input to both attorneys, and both attorneys came back, and this was the final draft that we had came to conclusion would be in the best interest of our city to adopt.
Which brings a question... Yeah, which brings a question to me. Not adopting, not doing this, but not adopting these by reference, what impact does that have on our own enforcement ability within the city of Menifee on our municipal code?
As far as the codes we'll have to enforce starting January 1st for any applications that we receive for building permits. So, the only thing that'll... We'll go back to the standard code language under the administrative section. And the only reason the changes is actually to clarify, for example, a permit is good for 180 days, and what it does is clarify how you continue that permit and what an actual recorded inspection, that's one of the amendments. Otherwise, it's in a gray area, and it's always up to interpretation. What this does is it clarifies what the intent of our administrative section is. So, we would just leave the administrative sections off and adopt the code as written by the state.
All right. Thank you. Do we have any comments from the Fire Marshal?
Yes, thank you. James Freiter, Riverside County Fire Department, County Fire Marshal, Honorable Mayor and Council Members. One of the things that Councilmember Furman, what you might be seeing in here is your current municipal code, Section 8.20, is the adoption of the Fire Code. And within that, it adopts the County Ordinance 787 by reference. And the County Ordinance 787 has a series of amendments in it to the state Fire Code. But because you're just referencing Ordinance 787, it appears that it's just a one, basically one item. What we've done this time around is we're recommending proposing that the actual 787 language that we're proposing through the Board of Supervisors actually come into the Menifee Code. So, instead of adopting Ordinance 787 by reference, the amendments that you see in your package are actually the amendments that we're proposing to become Ordinance 787, the updated as of 2013. The changes that we're recommending for City of Menifee would be where, instead of saying "Board of Supervisors," we're inserting "City of Menifee" or "City Council of City of Menifee."
Yeah. Kind of what I have a problem, it says we've added this to read as follows. Okay? You're just adding it to read as follows. What was it before? I mean, it's... You see what I mean? Everything is like that in this whole thing.
Yeah. The adoption paperwork doesn't include the strikeouts.
Yeah, I would like to see the strikeouts.
City Attorney?
Just to basically add on to what's being said, this... When the city formed, we had the same problem with adopting the Riverside Code. And we adopted a cover ordinance, if you will, that said, everything that says "Board of Supervisors" says "City Council." And that's wonderful, but now, as we go back and we're working with that code, and it's been changed in Riverside, and it hasn't been changed here, and there's confusion as to what is actually meant. This is the same kind of cleanup, if you will. It is going on with the uniform codes, which are adopted by the state, which apply to us whether we adopt them or not, that we're trying to accomplish. So, that's what it's about.
Thank you very kindly. And Madam Clerk, I believe we have speakers tonight on this topic?
Yes, Your Honor, thank you. Rick Crowe.
Unless Mr. Crowe would like to wait and have and speak at the public hearing.
Now, he's here. He waited this long.
But that gives him two opportunities to speak.
Anyway, my concern would be with the agricultural buildings. The way I kind of see things written here is that a horse stall, if I'm not mistaken, qualifies as an agricultural building. It says that the floor area structure not greater than 1,000 feet. Well, if you have more than one 24-by-24 stall, you're at 600 feet, that means you can't have more than one stall on your property, which makes no sense, because most people have a couple of horses. And they want to keep them in nice condition, so they want to cover their horses to protect them for their welfare. I would like to say I agree with Tom's recommendation to bring this before the Planning Commission and really hash it out a little more. It seems like there could be some improvements there. A minimum of setback of 20 feet on all sides from property lines. Just about everybody that owns a horse that I know of has their stalls probably within that range. Everybody's going to have to move their stalls. I think it needs a little more refinement. So, thank you.
City Manager?
Colin, would you please address those two items?
Sure.
Thank you.
What we tried to accomplish here was to bring us into consistency with the agricultural registration program that Riverside County currently has. This is exactly the way this registration program is written in Riverside County and exactly how it's administered. What it does is it allows an individual who chooses to comply with this registration program to come in and do a streamlined program where there's no inspections on these buildings. They register them. We will establish a fee for what that registration is, and we will keep that on file. If they register the building before they construct it and comply with the setbacks, that stays on file, similar to what is being done in Riverside County. It does not preclude an individual who wants to build a barn that is different than this. What that would do is it would come in through a plan review process and through the current planning process as a plot plan approval process. But as you can see, those cost a lot more money than what we were anticipating. We were trying to streamline this to be consistent with what is currently in practice in Riverside County. And that's what this agricultural program... It doesn't stop an individual from building a barn that's larger than 1,000 square feet. They can currently do that now. To do it to be legal, they would have to go through the current planning process for an accessory structure. This would just streamline the process for the smaller buildings.
Thank you. Do we have any other speakers on this topic?
Yes, sir.
How many?
One.
I'll take it now before we take additional council comments.
Chris Thomas.
My son is asleep on the floor, so thank you for letting me come speak. I come to you as a citizen of the city of Menifee, and hopefully, some of you know me. I just wanted to clarify what you're saying. I'm glad we're updating the building code. I think that's great, come up with stuff. But the limitations that this code provides are unrealistic. Anyone who has horses is going to put up three or four stalls, and it does not preclude us from doing it. But the volume that this limits us to is ridiculous. It needs to be enlarged to something like 5,000 square feet. So, now, this is code, and I understand, Mr. McClair, we didn't have a chance to hook up. I talked to Mr. McClair earlier about this. Maybe you could clarify anything for us? You said there would be some other manner or mechanism of dealing with this.
What I referred to earlier is that the building codes are health and safety. The zoning code is land use issues. They're separate. Adopting this building code gives a mechanism for those kind of structures to have a quick and easy process.